Like to be called J and D, May twenty-third, twenty-one, five. Over. We have a research agenda. Councilor.
Good morning, I'm Friday. Just if you could keep my family, I'll write for your prayers and just had a couple of messages this week, the last few weeks and is on at least and on the road to recover herself. Thank you for any prayers, wishes to be good to yourself, thank you.
Hold everything is why I go there. Who else? None? Councilor, you can give us a prayer, prayer.
May we follow heads. Give up our fathers, we come together once again in summer. In the morning, we just want to come and say thank you. All the blessings that we have restored upon us. God, we were in afternoons last week and the children's was just devastated. Thank you that you spared us once again, give us, we don't thank you for that. This morning, God, as we gave to the business of Kenner, I pray for wisdom, knowledge, and understanding. I live up the merit of whose chief, our chief, their administration, the council, they call. And I pray for the city of Kenner, that you will continue to keep us safe, but also keep us prosperous in the things that you do. That everyone that will come to this city will say thank you for the blessings that they have received of the things that you do. They are, I thank you.
For healing Brian Brennan's life and I pray for her full recovery. God, they're those that's going through their hour of bereavement in our city, even at this hour, but I pray that you would comfort their hearts in the mighty name of Jesus. And we thank you today because you said any word and all things give thanks. So we thank you for all the blessings that you have restored upon us. You take it like you.
Madam Clerk.
We have a quorum this morning. In accordance with Council Resolution Number B one-four-five-five-zero, please be advised that all cellular telephones and other devices of this nature must be deactivated or silenced throughout the council meeting. Mister Chairman, we've received a request to change the order of business this morning to take item eight A at the beginning of the meeting. I have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember Branigan, to change your order of business. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven-zero to change your order of business. Under the public appearance agenda, item eight is public hearings and final passage. Item eight A is a public hearing regarding summary ordinance number thirteen thousand seven hundred and ninety-seven, an ordinance adopting the operating budget for the City of Kenner for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand and twenty-five, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six. I have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember Sharwood, to open your public hearing. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven-zero. We're now in a public hearing and the mayor has a presentation.
I really have a presentation, just a couple of comments on how we got to this budget. Today you're voting on the city's proposed twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six annual budget of one hundred and forty-seven point seven million, which includes seventy-one point eight million for the general fund, forty-four point two million in special revenue funds, six point five million for debt service, nine point six million for capital improvements, and fifteen point four million for enterprise funds. Since taking office, each annual budget showed major accomplishments in this administration's overall goal to restore government efficiency and financial integrity within the City of Kenner. We've cut top-heavy departments and eliminated vacant positions that will never be filled. Our sewer bond rating, which was A minus negative outlook, has improved to an A minus stable outlook and is is secure because of fiscally responsible, although often difficult, decision-making. Kenner's fund balance has gone from thirty-six point one million to forty-five point six million, which is a twenty-six percent increase. And although we need to utilize some of its balance to to balance this budget, the increased ending balance continues. Maintaining a healthy fund balance is critical. The projected subsidy needed from the general fund for the fire department is one point six million. Even with the millage passing, Kenner Fire Department still has a budget shortfall. Shortfall is large part due to the January twenty-twenty-five increase that pay plan and the adjustments to the department's promotional pay plan. This year's fire debt service payment is six hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, which leaves them an outstanding debt service balance of four million, nine hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. The total debt service for the city is budgeted this, in his budget is eight million, seven sixty-five, four hundred and thirty-five dollars, which is glaring or which which concerning, not really concerning, but it's something that you have to keep in the back of your mind, that the city has approximately seventy, seventy, seven zero million in outstanding loans. A large part of it is wastewater, a bunch of it is, you know, large other twenty-thirty plan, there's a lot of, and a lot of other loans that we have sitting around. Other projected subsidy for the Kenner Police is nine million. Projected subsidy for wastewater is over three million. Some of the highlights of this budget are, the health insurance is up eight point one percent. Raises for police and city are three percent. Now, when we're going into dealing with this budget, we had talked about giving five percent increases in raises, but after going through the numbers and now three percent is all we could, we could, we could afford. And as you know, the fire department was adjusted in January, just four months ago. Retirement contribution rates, which is what the city pays and the employees' retirement funds, municipal employees went from twenty-eight percent to twenty-seven percent. Police went from thirty-five point sixty percent to thirty-three point four seven five percent. And fire remained consistent at thirty-three point two five. And these are steadily going to go down, hopefully, over the years with this unfunded accrued liability that we paying off in all these funds, so. Overall, the city's revenues are projected to be up four point five million, which is a ten percent increase, as we continue to trend in a positive direction. Revenues also come in up, but expenses are also up also. The treasure chest land-based casino revenue is nearly doubled as anticipated. The city is anticipating to receive four point three million dollars in total, which twenty-four percent will go to the police department, and the remaining balance will be split between capital, debt service, and the council. Fifty, fifty percent of the remainder will go to capital, which is one point six million. Twenty-five percent will go to debt service, which is eight hundred and twenty thousand, and twenty-five percent will go to the council. Districts one through five will each get one hundred and thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars. And finally, your at-larges get sixty-eight thousand, three seventy-five, since y'all made the change a couple of budgets ago to give the at-larges. The future of our city is bright and I thank you for all, for your steadfast support. I look forward to continuing our collaborative efforts to uphold the standard of public service our community deserves.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this ordinance? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Greg Teff, I'm in the fifth district. First of all, I just want to say this. To say that the firemen got a raise in January, that dog does not hunt. They hadn't been paid equity for such a long time, we're talking years, folks, not just one year, but we're talking about years. Plus, I must also include in that, we, the citizens, voted for a millage to give them the increase, not the city. So, to not make it fair for everyone, to me, is just ludicrous, that we would make one group or two groups of employees able to get higher increases than another group that contributes to our lives and well-being of the city? Come on, folks, again, they wait years. They got equipment that should have been finished in years. Now, as far as these buildings that's getting built, there is insurance proceeds for some of that, there is hurricane FEMA that should be taking care of part of that. So again, you could say anything you want, and you can blow as much smoke as you want. Yes, the city, I know, you know, is in a position where they have to stay within budget, but to give an additional one percent raise to the, to our fire department, not including the top layer of it, I'm talking about the people that actually get out there and grunt it out and save our lives, you're looking at around ninety-something thousand dollars being added to budget. And, and plus, they get ripped off. Our other employees get paid, their new raise will go into effect the new fiscal year. The fire department doesn't get paid like that. They get paid on their, they get the raise on their anniversary dates. So here we go, we're going to spread it out, so it's not like it's going to come out all at once. Again, I'm, all I'm saying, y'all did a good job on the budget, but I just don't think we've given the fire department the attention they needed, and it's not this administration's fault, it's many administrations' fault, but let's correct it, and we can do that today. Thank you.
Can I, can I respond? I have a, Mister Teff, I have a question for you. Since you, you know a lot about all of this stuff, how would a mayor go about every year that the fire department, by statute, gets a raise, right?
That is correct.
By statute? And no one else in the city gets, got a raise? How would we address that? Please help me out.
Well, you'd have to tell me how many times that happened with it, but again, I'm going to go back to one thing. We were grossly underpaying our firemen and women. And, and, and to your credit, you, you did present a millage so that we could fix part of that problem, because it has been a problem, that, that other administrations kicked down the road. But since they were already grossly underpaid compared to other employees within the city, and I'm talking about Police Department and COK, that, all, all I'm saying is that, that to ignore them now and not pay them the same thing we're paying others, to me, is just not fair. I mean, it really, it doesn't.
They some of the highest-paid city employees. You realize that?
What's that?
They, they are some of the highest-paid city employees.
Well.
You do recognize that?
Well, I also recognize we don't have, that we're using outside contractors, so I don't know really how many city employees we're really talking about, because we overspend on a contractor.
You know why we have outsized contractors? Because we can't pay everybody else enough to attract them to come work. And to keep up with a three percent increase, they still leaving to go to Jefferson Parish because they make more, or St. Charles Parish because they make more.
And, and I'm going to say this, that's a problem, that's a problem.
I could have sat here and done like everyone else did and done nothing. Do you think a mayor, two years into a first term, would want to put a tax increase in front of public? No one would do that. But when you look at the fire department budget, it was horrible, absolutely horrible. They had a longstanding lawsuit that the, the city lost with the retirement board that was building entrance every, every day. One point four million just in interest. You had firehouses on Duke Street that were just going to sit there and never be built. We bonded out the money once the millage was, was passed. It takes a couple of months to get things rolling, it takes a couple of years to get it built. We got fire trucks on order, you just can't go to a lot and buy one. You can ask any of these firemen, it takes, you order it today, you may get it this time next year if it gets on the line. The next thing they're getting, what they call a quint, is the one with the ladder on it, it's a three-year process when you order it. So we have all this in place, so you're not going to have all new shiny equipment from day one. It takes, it takes a plan to get it all done. The firehouse on Williams Boulevard is in the design phase now. We got, making plans to have money to build it when it's, the design's finished. But to say that we, ignoring the fire department is by far the absolute most false statement that anyone can make today, because we put more effort in the fire department than anywhere else in the city.
Let me just say, again, I said past administrations have ignored them. You have, you have taken steps, but we're, I'm, it's still clear that we, the citizens, did that millage.
That is correct.
And a lot of us got hit real hard with that millage that we didn't think is going to be as much as we got hit with.
That is correct.
But, but we're, we're willing to take care of the fire department because we need them as much as we need all of our other employees.
Okay, one, one final comment or question is, this is, I've been in office three years, July first. The fire department gets a two percent raise, a two percent raise, a two percent raise, right?
That's correct.
The city employees got nothing the first year. So it's now, this year, if they get three, the fire department get two, it's now even. They both have the same raise in the last three years.
Can I comment on that?
You can, yes.
I'm going to go back to a previous statement I made. They were undoubtedly underpaid for what they were doing for many, many years, up until the millage passed. Yeah, they got raises, but to me, other, other fire departments were paying, that had a city our size or better, more than our fire department. That's why we lose firemen because, or women, because they can go to a Jefferson Parish or, or a nearby parish and do better. You know, one of the things you learn in business, sometimes you have to take care of the employees first, because you need them on the line. When you lose them on the line and you have to replace them, it costs you much more money for training, development, and everything else to get that person up to speed. And we've got some new fire depart, fire personnel, and it's going to take a while, because when I read what state law requires of them for the first three years to be accredited in order to move up, it's a lot. And I'm sure, and I didn't look at Police Department, but I'm sure it's got the same type of scenario. The only problem is, and, and you took care of the state-paced part of it, but for the first, you know, for that first year, but still, again, they, you know, it's not this administration's fault for everything. I'm just asking this administration, you know, we've got these people, we've got new people that we already know that's going to be upcoming, let's be fair and let's move them forward. Now, that's all I can really say to it, because your point is well-taken, I'm not going to deny that, and I looked up the law, and you was exactly right. I, because I had to learn how to look it up. And for me, that's not easy, because I'm not one that likes to look up that kind of thing, and they don't make it easy. So I took that time because I wanted to make sure that what everybody's saying is true and what some people are saying is false. And, like I said, you were right, and I even let people know, I said you were right. All I'm asking is that, yeah, and you know, since they don't get paid until their anniversary date, there may be more taxes between now and then that could maybe take care, or we may make a deal where we can cut some expenses somewhere in between the year to kind of take care of that. You know, because the anniversary date system is kind of different than what the other employees of Kenner, both Fire Department, I mean, the Police Department and COK is going to get, because they get theirs at the fiscal year. So that's another thing, because we got some time that we can kind of work it in, because I'm sure, and y'all have been good about keeping prices down and, and allocating some of those expenses. Well, I got to believe y'all are good enough to be able to find this over the period of time that, that their anniversary dates would come up, this, this ninety-three thousand dollars difference. And it's not going to be like all at once, it's going to be spread out over twelve months, depending on their anniversary date. I, I got to tell you, I'm just that strong, because I just feel by working in business, my, my biggest asset was my employees. Everything else was secondary, because without them, I couldn't run the business. And, and right now, we've got big expenses, and not your fault, because we put ourselves there, but, you know, when we hire a contractor, the bottom line is you're paying them more in the long run, because, you know, they're paying, they're going to, and their cost to you, they've already put in.
Yes, sir, I got, Mister Greg. Sir, I, I do understand your passion for the fire department, as well as mine, okay? But we have to move on.
I'm fine, I was, I wasn't going to say nothing, but the, the mayor, because, because I, because I don't want to go through that again and have somebody else scolded. Thank you.
Mister Richard?
Thank you, Mister President. Richard Brown, live in District Four in Kenner. And I've, I've contacted, I think, most or maybe even all of the council members, either in person or by telephone or text message or email, but I've said the same thing to all of y'all in different ways. And I had a twenty or twenty-five minute conversation with my own council member, that I am urging the council to not approve the budget unless either one of these two things happens, unless you amend it to give the firemen the same cost of living increase that all other city employees are getting, which actually might just be an additional one percent, not, not an additional three percent. Or, and this is the or, this is the alternative, give us a very good reason why they are not receiving the same cost of living increase as the other firemen. And, and Mister Mayor, I did not get to talk to you, I apologize, I wanted to, and then I hope to catch up with you yesterday at the Memorial Day ceremony, but didn't get to. As part of your explanation, Mister, Mister Teff helped, that for the last three years, the firemen have received their two percent cost of living adjustment, city, other city employees did not get it. That, that, that helps to explain what's going on. I'm just asking this council to, the, the firemen have been treated like the redheaded step, stepchild in Kenner for too long. The voters, the public, thinks that tax increase was for the fire department and for the firemen. And I'm afraid when the public sees that all city employees except firemen are getting this cost of living increase, they're not going to be happy about it, you know, and y'all are going to take the heat for it. I really don't want to see that happen. I like all of y'all, and I think you're trying to do the best you can. I'm just asking that you either give them a cost of living increase or explain to us why it is not being done and why it should not being done. And that's, I appreciate the time, and thank you, Mister Mayor.
Thank you, Mister Richard. Ms. Amy Dunn?
Hotard.
Hotard? Oh, Amy Dunn, Hotard, should I say?
That's right. So, the fire department millage in this budget is supposed to address KFD firefighters' quote, being paid wages far below minimum standards. And that's your language, not mine. Since the millage was obtained, the starting pay was increased, we're all aware of that, to thirteen dollars an hour. But what's not being made clear is that KFD also stripped the firemen of two percent increases between year one and three, and after twenty-two full years of service. A pay or an increase they were receiving pre-millage. This was specifically addressed in the prior budget meeting, whether this would occur. And I'm going to play for you what was said.
But they're getting their, their, their raise that they get every year.
But they're getting their raise, they're getting their raise that they get every year.
The ones that exceeded their twenty-third year, does it stop?
And the ones that exceeded their twenty-third year, it doesn't stop. Well, it stopped. So I think what's not being made clear to the public is not only are they're not being treated equally to other city employees, they've been stripped of benefits that they had received before. And that's also after stripping away other benefits like incentive pay. The bottom line, you can't take away a yearly increase and call it a raise, give with one hand and take with another. You can't say to the guy with twenty-three years who didn't see an increase due to compression or that didn't get a pay raise is not going to now get a two, you know, not going to get a two percent, and he's not going to be treated like another city employee, because you are taking away this benefit from him, even though all the other firemen in front of him received it. You can't put a cap on earnings and say the firemen are better off. You can't say that every firefighter got a forty percent increase, when that's simply not true. I can tell you if my household saw a forty percent increase, I wouldn't be standing here today, I have better things to do. Yes, the starting pay was increased from eight ninety-two to thirteen, that's the first increase since two thousand and six, something long overdue, but what's not being explained is that the wages have been stunted now over the course of a career, and a fireman's not going to earn as much or have as much of an earning potential as he would have had pre-millage even. So yes, thirteen dollars an hour for the beginning people, but what about the guy who's at twenty-three, who doesn't see a change in his wages post-new pay plan because of compression, and who also now is getting those two percents he would have gotten next year? No more. And then also, hey, we're going to give other city employees three percent, but we're not going to give you guys three percent. So let's be transparent, the base pay has been increased to the minimum of what was promised for starting firemen, with some of the long-term firemen seeing no increase, and then the firemen are being stripped of other benefits and aren't being treated equally. I would ask this council to please treat our firemen the way that they should be treated. Thank you.
Ms. Hotard, thank you. Mister Matt Hotard, sir, your turn.
Matthew Hotard, District Five, seventeen-year Fire Department Captain, and also the former president of the association. After all that's been said, there's some things that I also saw in previous, the budget hearing that I'd like to address to maybe give some clarification on for people who don't quite understand. Number one is, the lawsuit keeps being brought into the way that we're getting paid now. I am not going to discredit this city, or this mayor, or even members of this department, saying that they're addressing issues such as trucks and fire departments that are long, long, long overdue. That is also a safety issue. Having a truck break down on massive fires, which happened three times in the past year and a half, cannot happen, and they're addressing it. That's great. When you talk about pay, the lawsuit was specifically brought up two different times in the last two meetings about the pay. This lawsuit was brought to this mayor, our administration, before the millage vote. I've said this before, and I'm going to say it again, it sucked doing it, super difficult for me to do. But we beat the same drum, went out, did what most people thought would be impossible, and got this millage that not only helps that apartment, but helps the city. Now it's a problem. I don't understand that. And now we, as employees of the Kenner Fire Department, are looking at the loss of a two percent, like they said, from year one to three and then after. Here's a fun fact. Myself, as a seventeen-year captain, will not make as much as a captain once I reach my earning potential as a captain. I'm stagnant, there is no growth. As a district chief, was the next position, I become stagnant, because there is no growth. As an assistant chief, I become stagnant, because there is no growth. So, I understand what the mayor is saying, they're some of the highest paid. The only person who's the highest, the highest paid is our chief, he still gets his two percent every year. Why? Why? Well, you're going to say, Matt, he's not a twenty-three-year employee. Well, you're right, but he sure does pick his vacation like a twenty-three-year employee, because he changed the rule in the Fire Department. So he gets his vacation as a twenty-three employee, but then he gets his two percent because he's not a twenty-three-year employee? I don't quite understand that. Myself, as an assistant chief, in ten years from now, will not make what an assistant chief is making now. Please explain to me how that is growth. To start for the new guys, to get people here, that's great, it's a starting point. But to take things away, and then to have, when you guys were in this meeting, when he had his friends explaining how, you know, what the kind of person he is, and like, I think everybody should be able to defend themselves, but we were all getting handed pieces of paper that said, hey, this is what's happening. And unfortunately, none of our district chiefs or assistant chiefs knew anything about it, they couldn't answer any of our questions. I think there's a huge miss, and I think that we had a really good opportunity to work together, even with a lawsuit, to possibly, this would have been done the proper way, fix some of that stuff, or not be a farm team for the rest of the South. And we missed that. And I, I agree with what my wife said, I think we're just asking for some type of equality, and to not have any growth at all for the duration of our career, once we hit a certain point, and be less than what they're making now, is inexcusable. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Your turn.
Nicholas Alva, Heta Tudante, Kenner Firefighter Association President. Council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm here today as a representative of the men and women who serve this city with dedication, day in and day out. Let's not sugarcoat this, what we're experiencing is retaliation. After raising legitimate concerns about pay disparity, concerns that went ignored, we pursued legal action as a last resort. In response, even after that fact, the Kenner Firefighter Association, in good faith, came together to help the city pull off a successful millage campaign. Yet this administration still implemented a new pay plan that punishes our workforce by stripping away longstanding two percent annual cost of living increases, and excluding nearly half of our department from any increase this year, after advertising a three percent raise for everyone else in the city. Hiding behind the state minimums is a cop-out. The law sets a floor, not a ceiling. This administration isn't following law, they're weaponizing it. And it's happening after the public stepped up, the citizens of Kenner approved a millage increase, because they were told it would go towards improving firefighter pay and benefits. That was the message during this campaign, that was the promise. Instead, the pay plan that followed reduced what was standard for years, and took a giant leap back. I asked the council to step up and protect the will of the people. Because the public were misled, they didn't vote to fund minimums, they voted to raise standards and not lower them. On top of that, we've seen the removal of educational incentive, miscalculated promotions, and even our state supplemental pay brought up against us. As a reminder, it was established and is funded entirely by the state legislator, not to replace or offset what municipalities should provide. It is intended to be a state supplemental benefit, not to substitute local compensation. Using state supplemental pay to justify stagnant or reduce local pay completely defeats the legislative intent behind this statewide firefighter support. But here's the truth, all of this isn't just harming us, it's hurting the city, it's driving good firefighters away, it's damaging morale, and it's making recruitment and retention harder than ever. We are not here to ask for special treatment, we are here demanding fairness, transparency, and for the promise made to the public and to the firefighters to be honored. This city needs leadership that builds up its Fire Department, not breaks it down. You, as council members, have the power to ask the hard questions, to push back, and to stop this pattern before more damage is done. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick.
Can I make one comment on supplemental pay?
Yes, sir.
Supplemental pay has nothing to do with any, absolutely anything that came up. In fact, the city, in the first year before a firefighter or policeman is eligible to receive state supplemental pay, the city pays it the first year, out of the city's general fund. And lo and behold, guess what the firemen think, they want to double. So they say when it's part of their salary, if it's not in writing, when the state supplemental pay kicks in, they say you can't take away the city benefit, which, all you're doing is shorting the new guy now, who's not going to get it, because somebody wants more money in their pocket. I get the younger guys praising, raising the starting salary. They got two employees over there, what they budgeted for now, planning for retirement. It's, look, yes, Wednesday at the Jefferson Parish council meeting, Jefferson Parish firemen, who are some of the highest paid in the state, they complaining they have no money. They need more money to go home. It's, look, this is what the budget is, we came up with a pay plan, we were working with them, next thing you know, you're not working with them, so the fire administration came up with a pay plan. I had zero input, other than that nobody's losing money, and don't break the law. We pay them more for overtime, their overtime kicks in at a hundred and six hours, we pay them at ninety-six. So there's built-in ten hours overtime, all the time. They, let's see, a first year fireman makes, at the end of the day, George, how much is it, fifty, how much thousand in a year? I don't want to mislead people, I just want to let them know what the W-2 out the door is, when these guys, with the, where the schedule runs. Look, if you want to be apples to apples, work twelve-hour shifts, five days a week, you know, that's, it's, it's two different things. So, I put a lot of effort in this Fire Department in the last three years, they're trying to get money in, new equipment, better training, and kind of fix the promotional pay, because I don't know why nobody followed the state law on promotional pay, the city was, I have no idea, nobody can tell us how that happened.
It's forty-nine thousand, three sixty-nine, thirty-eight, and it, so it makes the thirteen-dollar hourly rate nineteen seventy-eight.
Look, we trying to help, as, like I said, you don't want to use a lawsuit as something, but it's in the back of your mind, if we say something, George has got a whole lot of information in front of him that is incorrect, I'm going to try to correct him, the fire chief's going to try to correct him, if I say there's something wrong, somebody's going to correct me. But that's where we are today. In the last three years, the city employees and the fire employees, who are all the same, if this proposed budget increase or raises go into effect, they will get the same raises, if they're eligible for, eligible for it. Police aren't guaranteed a raise, ever, city employees, ever. Fire Department is the only ones that are guaranteed a raise after the third year, in up to twenty years. I mean, that's, that's kind of the way the statute reads now, and that's kind of the way we built, once they walked away from the conversations of building the pay plan. I said, put it in, make it, you know, follow the state statutes, and go from statute, and go from there. That's about all I got to say on the Fire Department, is I don't know how we got to, just, just this year, the pay plan increased eight, eight-hundred-ninety-seven-thousand-one-hundred-fifty-five-thousand-fifty-six cents. That's a lot of raises in the pay plan. So, I just don't understand how people come up here just saying that the Fire Department's being left out, being left out, being left out, when they're getting the absolute most attention in the last three years.
Councilman Brannigan?
Yeah, so, I, over the last couple of years, when the eight ninety-two an hour kept being thrown out, and, and that was for starting firemen, and I guess the thing that struck me was, when the Chateau Estates Golf Shop burned down, and the people on Facebook were saying, oh, look at all of those poor firemen making eight dollars and ninety-two cents an hour, out there, which was totally incorrect. I think that the public does not understand the pay plan that goes along with the Fire Department. It is one of the most complicated things, trying to put the numbers together and come up with where they are. And, a couple of things to address. Mayor Glazer asked me how much the thirteen dollars an hour generates, it's three hundred, I mean, it's forty-nine thousand, three sixty-nine, thirty-eight, nineteen seventy-eight an hour. Now, that does not include eighteen dollars of holiday pay, overtime, unscheduled overtime, paid details that are separate, vacation pay, that is just the core thing. So what happens is, when, and the way you come up with forty-nine thousand, you're adding the thirteen dollars an hour times twenty-four-hundred-and-ninety-six hours, you're adding overtime, which is four-hundred-and-eight hours a year, which is one of the highest Fire Department overtime numbers that I saw on the list in this region. Most are a hundred-and-twenty hours of overtime, a hundred-and-sixty, two-ten, we're at four-oh-eight. When you add the state supplemental, the overtime, that's how I came up with the forty-nine-thousand-dollar salary. The city of Kenner pays the state supplemental pay until the fireman becomes a firefighter, okay? When they go on through training and everything. We're the second highest-paid Fire Department in this region, in the state. Now, I've had calls, and I had a guy call me, not mentioning any names, and when I look back at his salary history, because adjustments were done in April, May, and June of two thousand and twenty-three, this particular fireman, who was, who is a captain, in April of twenty-three, his base was fifty-six thousand, five-hundred-seventy-seven dollars. In May of twenty-three, there was a large adjustment done, and his base went to sixty-thousand-one-sixty-nine. In July of twenty-three, three months later, he got his two percent, another twelve-hundred. In July of twenty-four, he got his two percent, he went to sixty-two thousand, six hundred. And January first of two thousand and twenty-five, when the new pay plan based on the state statute was put in place, his salary went to sixty-four thousand, seven thirty. Now, that's a whole bunch of numbers. His salary went up from April of twenty-three to January first of twenty-five, eighty-one-hundred bucks a year, it's a fourteen percent increase. Using the state statute that's been there for sixty years, I don't know why other administrations didn't follow that, because I think it makes sense. In the last forty years, when you talk about raises, I, I got the data on the raises, and this print's a little bit smaller. In the Glazer administration, and it's by mayor, that's how it was given to me, in the Glazer administration, in twenty-two, the city employees got zero, the Fire Department got two. Twenty-three, the city employees got two percent, Fire Department got two. Twenty-four, the city employees got three percent, Fire Department got two. This year, it's projected three percent, Fire Department's getting two. When you add those numbers up, it's eight percent across the board, I think that's fair. Go back to the Zahn administration, and those five years of increases on the Fire Department were eighteen percent. And Councilman McKenny, and I, and several other council members, worked on the budget in that year, and got another two percent to get, to increase pay for firemen and city employees. The firemen got seven percent that year. The city employees got two percent COLA, two percent elective, because of how we worked the budget that year, and then merit raises. And, and a merit raise is zero to four-point-five percent in that year. The catch is that, when it go, when the, when the, the Fire Department does not utilize a merit raise, if you're given a merit raise and your cap is four percent, the Fire Department gets four percent. You can't do a merit raise in a Fire Department, from what I've been told. When you look at the five years of Zahn, that Fire Department received eighteen percent in increases, and the city employees received eleven. Mike Segura was the mayor, interim mayor, he was two and two. Mike Yenney, during that span of time, from two thousand and eleven to two thousand and fifteen, Fire Department went up twelve percent, city employees had two years with zero raises, they went up seven-point-five. You go back to Ed Muniz's years, it was fourteen percent for fire, seven percent for city employees, with two years with no increases. So, it's a situation where, when you take that, those years, that's a, almost a twenty percent increase for the Fire Department, more than what the city workers got. The health insurance went up in the city, as Mayor Glazer said, eight-point-one percent, not passed on to any employees, it's costing the city a half a million dollars, thank you for doing that for our employees. The vacations, years one through ten on a fireman, they get ten days, and they get one day every year after that to thirty, which is a lot of vacation time. Mayor Glazer talked about the pension contributions, and the higher percentage for fire versus city employees. Basically, when I look at the salaries that the firemen are making, they are the highest-paid people in the city. And when you look at the twenty-two people that are over twenty years, those two, twenty-two people, their salaries are their W-2 income from two thousand and twenty-four was two-point-six million dollars. There are twenty-two individuals, two people are under a hundred thousand, and the other twenty are over a hundred thousand. Seventy-five thousand, ninety-eight thousand, don't know why. The highest person on, on that, on my spreadsheet is a hundred-and-forty-three thousand a year. It's a situation where I think that the public sees this eight ninety-two an hour, and thinks that every fireman makes eight ninety-two an hour. And that's not the facts. When you look at the base pay of those twenty-two employees, it's one-point-eight million, one, one, one million, eight-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand, they made two, their W-2 was two-point-six. That's eight-hundred-thousand dollars difference. When you go down the list, and you look at every fireman, and whoever said that there was not a forty-five percent increase across the board is correct. The increase was based on time, job title, and basically, it went from two-point-six-one to forty-five-point-five-nine. So the lower-paid people were definitely going up. The guy that's at forty-five-point-five-nine, his base salary, old salary, not including overtime and state supplemental, was twenty-two thousand, two-eighty-seven. His new salary, January one, is thirty-two thousand, four-forty-eight. It's a ten-thousand-dollar increase a year. I think that the state statute has corrected a lot of problems from the past. And this council, and this administration, I feel, has done a great job in getting things corrected for all employees in the city. The other thing I have to say is that, you know, when Councilman Brennan and I were approached at an event, because there weren't enough chest compression units for every fire station, we got together with the council, and we made sure that there were enough chest compression units, so that every fire station has one, I don't know if it was every truck or every, I think it was every fire station. When, when there were questions about how the new fire station being built off of Loyola, they had to go through the red lights, we made sure that the median was cut out to let the fire truck have a quicker responsive time by running across the median. Those may be little things to you, but I think that this administration and this council has always been pro-fire, and I think that what has been done for the Fire Department, I think we are on plan.
Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to come and address the council?
Can I say one brief thing?
Okay, go ahead.
Did I make a mistake? No, but I've always, like, I've been on the side with, with Nick and Matt, as a board member on a law enforcement side, fighting with mayors, filing suit against mayors, and all that stuff. But I've always been that the benefits, you can't count the benefits as salary, because they don't take it home, I mean, you just gotta, whatever they take home is pretty much what you gotta, that's their salary. The benefits, we pay, it's just something we give them, the vacation, they earn it, we pay for it, all that stuff. But I'm always one not to try to inflate a, a salary based on benefits. We have, you know, other communities around here that put the overall total compensation, where we buy them a uniform, they add that in their salary, which that's just, it's part of the business, the city's got to supply uniforms and stuff like that, it shouldn't be calculated into somebody's salary. Salary is what hits their bank account, so I just wanted to let everybody know that's my stance on, on salaries, just nothing, none of the benefits, you'd never hear me try to calculate all that in, and state supplemental pay, it's a supplemental pay, so it's not anything that's built in where we're going to attract you, we'll tell you that, you know, you're going to get extra money, but it's supplemental pay.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
I would like to ask for a rebuttal to Councilman Brannigan on some of the comments that were made, the first being that he was talking about the minimum pay.
Mr. Chairman, she's had, she's had her three minutes, everybody in the public has had, if there's someone else that would like to come up and address the council at this time, please come forward, if not, we're If not, we're gonna close the public hearing and we will entertain council members' comments after that. Seeing no one else in the public wishing to address the council, I have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember Sharwith, to close your public hearing. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. I have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember Sharwith, for approval. Council members, uh, you, entertain your discussions now.
Councilman Wilmot.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a few questions I wanted to clear up for the, the record. Um, this is, this is a tough issue for all of us, you know? This, you, you hear it from the firefighters and you hear it from the administration. And from the council's viewpoint, we're trying to take it all in and, and, and do the best job we can and, and, and trying to balance this budget and get a good budget in for the city. As far as the firefighters are concerned, I do have a few questions. I guess for Liz, if you will. Um, I don't know that, you may or may not know this answer. If not, then I think Councilman Branigan might, but I think it needs to be on the record. What, what is the additional cost for this budget for what the firefighters want? How much money are we talking about?
You're talking about the 1% difference? It's about, it's about 100,000 difference, um, is what's projected for the, from a 2 to a 3.
And what, what firefighters does it impact? Do you know?
I don't know what they're, if we're going with the pay plan, then it would be a firefighter from year 3 to 23.
Three, 3 to 23, they would get an additional 1%? Is that correct?
I'm assuming.
Anybody know the answer to that?
I mean, I don't know what they want. What I heard was overall, they're upset that the one through their career isn't getting it. But according to the pay plan, if we're just gonna change the pay plan for the 1%, then um, it would be the 100,000.
And so, we're talking about the difference between, everything discussed today is 100,000, roughly?
There were a lot of things discussed, so.
But it comes up, I'm sure it's a reoccurring as well, because it's gonna be annual.
Correct. Once we give it, then we have to, you know, sustain that the next year.
Okay.
Councilman, I do believe it may be a little more, because I think the ones that are getting the 2% fall between a certain 3 and 20-year. The ones that fall outside, if you give them 3%, it's gonna increase. I don't know how many fall outside of that, but that'd be an additional 3% on top of the, you said
Correct.
The ones that get 2%, the ones that, the outliers, right now are getting, if they're over their, uh, their time, some of them make more than the pay plan costs for now. But if the one, if you put 100% of fire employees at 3%, yeah, it's gonna be a little more than, than the 1% calculation from the 3 to 20. It's the ones outside that I don't think is fact, the 100,000 is infected in that.
Correct. The 100 is just year 3 through 23, so the, according to how we're giving the 2% currently.
And if you put in the outliers, such as the mayor said, then roughly, I mean, is it another 50,000, 100,000?
Yeah, I would, I would say probably another 50.
So, we're, yeah, okay, so I'm just trying to get an all-around figure. So, this, we're talking about 150,000 difference. Um, in addition to that, uh, or somebody said earlier, and I just wanted to make sure it's clear on the record, uh, the city still subsidizes the Kenter Fire Department, does it not? Even after this millage was passed? Is that correct?
Correct. It's about 1.6 million.
One, 1.6 million, okay. And uh, thank, thank you for the, those, those answers. And Ms. Dufour, um, our city attorney, if you will, is this the pay plan that we have, we ha- I'm sorry. So, so, um, the pay plan that we have now in place, uh, I'm sorry, the play plan that's being proposed in this budget, is it, to your knowledge and belief, everything is, is legal? It's not a problem, to your knowledge?
No, there's nothing in the pay plan that's illegal. Um, we're following, we're following the statute that we were sued on, and that was brought to our attention, that apparently, for years, as the mayor has said, previous administrations had not followed. So, we are following the statute as the statute lays out exactly. So, that's, that's, no, the, the
Okay.
Current, the current plan is not illegal, no, absolutely not.
And I, I know the, the mayor has put tremendous amount of time and effort since he's been in office, uh, working with the firefighters and, and the pay plan, and uh, even promoting the, the millage and getting, and it passed, and, and I know the firefighters worked their tails off to, to make that happen. And I know that the mayor, uh, worked on his end, uh, so it can all come together. And it took a lot of effort. So, um, kudos to both of y'all, all y'all, for making that happen. But at the same time, now here we are with 150,000 difference in pay raises. And, and, and I think that's, it, this shouldn't be, but at the same time, why are we here? So, um, I certainly understand it, and, and I hope my colleagues, uh, we all vote accordingly. So, thank you.
Councilman Branigan?
Ms. Dufour. Okay. So, we're now following the state statute, okay, with the pay increases that went in January 1st. And the state statute says that the uh, 2% stops after 20 years of service.
22 years, so it's
22 years of service.
Zero to three years, and then after 22 years, no more raises.
So, you get it from 3 to 22?
Two, yes.
Okay. So, if we're following the state statute based on the hourly income requirements from the state, then it, I don't think that we can deviate from that, or shouldn't deviate from that.
I mean, that's, that's really a decision by the council and the mayor on whether you deviate. It's, it, there's nothing in there that says you can't do that, you can't go more. It doesn't say you can't, but that, but that's not what we're doing. We, a big part of it is being sued on the statute, following the statute, and we're trying to follow the statute. So, we don't follow, you know, when we're all gone in 10 years, 20 years, whatever it is, nobody comes back and says, why didn't that council and that mayor not follow the statute? We are following the statute so that we are legal for, for probably the first time maybe ever for the city of Kenter, to follow the fireman statute. So, we're trying to follow it. We're trying to take as big a steps as we could possibly take to get where we need to be without, you know, bankrupting the city or causing more financial problems on ourselves. And that's, and that's where we are right now. So, we are, we are, we, you know, we still have a lawsuit, which is, you know, gonna cost some money, and, and we're still trying to do the right thing. And we're doing the right thing by the statute, yes.
Okay, so, we're being sued to follow the state statute, but we don't, they don't want, the fire department doesn't want to follow the whole state statute?
Correct. They don't want us, they want us to, to not follow the statute exactly as written, correct? They want us to use it as, I guess, as a baseline, is what, from what I can read, from what they're asking us to do. They want us to follow the statute, you know, on these steps, have the pay plan, which we've done, but yet, when it came to the point of it saying that you don't get raises from 0 to 3, and after this certain period, they don't want us to follow that part of the statute. But I, I'm assuming if they read the statute, they knew that was in there.
Well, I think that what got us in trouble years ago was not following the statute.
Absolutely.
Okay, so
Absolutely.
Either followed or you don't follow.
Absolutely. That's if, if
You can't pick and choose, that's ridiculous.
It's, it's
I mean, if we had 100 million in our general fund, we wouldn't be talking about this right now.
Sure. So, we spent the last three years really cutting and, and scrimping and, and trying to make changes to get the fund balance up, to, to try to get people raises, that deserve raises, to buy new equipment, not just fire department, police department. I mean, we've had to buy police cars. Um, but we've done a lot to try to, to make what we can do with what we have, and we have done a lot with what little bit we have. Um, and, and we're still trying to do a lot with the fire department. We're still, we're still subsidizing, you know, 1.6 million from the general fund to help, to, to support the fire department. And God forbid, if it was more, we would've had to do more. But as everything is going up, all of our costs are going up, it's, you know, we can't get a break on that end.
Thank you, Michelle.
Okay. Councilman Brennan?
Thank you, Council Chair. Councilman Branigan, I think the, the information you've provided is, is very, very good. The mayor, I think, has given us answers as well. You know, with Councilman Wilmot said, I've been sitting here going, all right, well, how much more would the 1% be? How much more would the 1% be? And really, part of me wants to say, i- it's, you know, only 150,000. And I get that, and it is a lot of money. It may not be to a lot of other people. Part of our responsibility, being on this council, is to follow what we need to follow. And if, if, if this is what's set by, as Ms. Dufourin said, what we should be following, then a- as much as it may pain people, and as much as it pains us, we still have to be prudent in what we've been sworn to do. And we have to follow what we've been sworn to do. As, as it's been mentioned, we have been so proactive to all departments, all personnel, the fire department, the police department, e- everybody we can, but there are only so many nickels and dimes to go around. And I, again, it, as much as it pains me and is, it, you know, Councilman Wilmot asked about the amount, I still think we have to follow what is mandated. And, you know, i- i- I hate to say that, but I, I, I just, I think we need to follow it and, and move along with this as it's proposed. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Ma'am, you are out of order. Please refrain from your comments in the audience. Please be respectful of the council. Is there any other council members? At this point, we will entertain an amendment. I have an amendment at the motion of Councilmember Lahat, seconded by Councilmember Branigan, amending the legislation to add a section four that would read that the proposed budget was amended by the council before adoption to increase the transfer to the capital budget by 1,500,000 to be distributed equally to the seven council persons to be used for capital purchases. Again, I have a motion by Councilmember Lahat, seconded by Councilmember Branigan. Is there any discussion on the amendment?
Yes. This is on the
Councilman Lahat?
No, you go, you first.
Okay. I was actually wanting to discuss the firemen for a minute before we got to this, so I'm gonna do that right now. It's, yeah, I'm an attorney and so the last three years, when we do the budget, um, and I'm just, you know, sometimes you walk in a room and you say, well, don't talk about something if you don't fully understand it. And I'm gonna violate that rule today, because the fireman fund pay scale, and I've tried to wrap my brain around it, and I've talked with, um, Jason Dyer many times. I've met with the Fireman Association. It's still confusing, and the past, the ways, the, the manner in which the firemen have been treated in the past year, it was terrible. It predated everybody that was sitting in this room today. The budget of the last three years, I'm just, I'm not singling about any, anybody out in this room, but the police budget, I meet with Chief Conley every year, we meet twice, we meet at a coffee shop, I meet again at his, his, at the police precinct. The fireman budget, it, it's, I hear so many different things. And the education needed in this city, or really overall, on a, on a fireman fund basis, fireman basis, pay, the pay scale, for us to fully grasp how all of this works, it needs substantial education. There, before, next year, I need to meet with a fireman, the chief, multiple times I could do with the police chief. And look, I'm not singling anybody out here, but this is a very emotional issue for a lot of people in this room, but Chief Conley reaches out to me months before this occurs and explains everything in the police budget about what's going on, what they need, you know, and how we can maneuver things. We've done a lot for the firemen. We have, you know, we passed the millage and, and, and my, Mayor Glazer was right to pass a tax on the public. The second year into his term was, was tough, but we all voted for it, and the public overall voted for it. We've bought fire apparatuses, which are fire trucks. And I don't, still don't understand it 100%, and I'm a council member, and I'm just gonna say that today, on record. And, and, and another thing I'm gonna just put out there is, even if this, if it is 150,000, if we amend that today, I hear rumblings from inside, from the fire department, that they, they don't even know if that, it would, the raise would even go into effect, that people that want the money over the 23-year, you know, experience stand would even get it. Because I've heard rumblings after the millage that some of the, the, the raises were not gonna go into effect, which really pissed a lot of us off. And, but the, 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 the work that Mayor Glazer and his team have done to make sure those raises went to effect is very tedious, very extensive. And I think, you know, and I think Mayor Glazer gets, you know, hot when he talks about this, because he has spent a lot of time. And I'm, I'm just not, even if we vote for the 150 today, I don't even know if it's, if the right people are gonna get the money, because I've not been sat down and told that this is exactly where this would go. The people that are capped out, that, that make, you know, they administrate, people that, that are not gonna get the, the cost of living increase, I'm not even confident that it would even go into effect. And it, I, it, it's, it's a very tough issue. I, I just think the next year, I need to meet with a lot more people in the fire department, or maybe, maybe hire a consultant to explain this exactly, how this is, how, how it goes into effect, how it's funded. The lawsuit, look, I don't, I know there's some, Mr. Silva got up here and talked about the retaliation. I don't think any of that's occurred. Like, I'm an attorney, I don't, look, you can file your lawsuit, and that doesn't, has nothing to do with anything I'm talking about, and that's fine. I just think that we need to be more apprised of how, exactly how the money works with the fire department. You know, even if, if I entertain the 150, I, I don't think we, we can do that today, even though I want to. I'm just not confident that would actually go to the people that, that want it. And so, yeah, I just, I think it is, it is where it is. I think we've done a lot for the, the Kenter Fire Department. Can we do more? We can, everybody can always do more, can always do more for streets, can always do more for police. Um, I think a lot of effort's gone into all this, so I just wanted to put that out there and tell you guys, we need to be explained, we need to be taught this better. Okay, on the amendment for the transfer, this is a capital type transfer for the districts to be more in charge of the money. It's not really a, we're not taking money, it's just, this is a method for the districts and of cour- and the at-large councilmen A and B to actually be able to, do actually work, um, for capital improvement projects, current street repairs, any type of recreation or, you know, capital improvements for the different directors or agencies. This is a transfer of 150 per, per seat, not just the district seats. Um, I've met, I think everybody's in, on board with this, um, to better allow us to do work. Um, I have my account, I have, you know, money, it's already spinning in my head, I have, you know, 50,000 reserved for the Kenter Police, uh, Lake Town Police Station that they're building. I just authorized another 6,000, I think, this week for telecommunications. We have 50,000 reserved in my district for the construction of a pickleball court on the Alabama Avenue Beachview Heights subdivision, which is completely in disrepair and really kinda trash and crime-ridden. I'm getting ready to do another 12 corners for, with Christine Calamari, who's very, very responsive to repair stuff, and I'm, I wanna meet with Jose, uh, very soon to go over more street work. And I think more, you know, having the council members more control of some of this money, that it's just in our control to spend on the capital is gonna be a very wise choice. And I've spent the money since I've been here, and I, I think it's a, it's a great move, so I, I move for the amendment.
Anybody else on the amendment? Mayor Glazer?
I guess, I guess, I don't even know if this thing works, if y'all can hear me. I heard about this a few months, a few weeks back, I guess. Councilman Lahat called and said they were moving along with it. And, um, I guess on the surface, uh, you know, we, we work well together, but I'm opposed to this budget amendment because of several things. It's bad optics, it's bad politics, it's bad for the city. When you're seven months away from qualifying to run for reelection, and you're gonna go out and do a bunch of little pet projects, I mean, that was the administration of the past, where past, where you throw some mulch on the ground, trim a tree and things like that. That's, that's the stuff that kind of drives me absolutely crazy. As I stated in the opening remarks, council capital from the treasure chest increased this year. Each person's going to get district seats, $136,751. At-Large is $68,375. Now, the current balances in the council, I know Councilman Lahat said he's got a bunch of money already dedicated to some projects in this district, but District 1 is by far the winner. She has absolutely not one penny in her account because she's, she's building some, something at Buddy Lawson. District 2 has right about $150,000. 3's got $365,000. D4's got $263,000. D5, I guess Brennan spends a lot of money because he's got $83,000. At-Large A's got $25,000, and B has $64,000. My question is, is if you take another $1 million out of the general fund, where's the cuts going to be made? Is the question. Because it's just money that's sitting in the general fund. We're trying to build so we have rainy day. It wasn't five years ago when a lot of y'all were sitting on this council where the administration was going to banks to try to borrow money to keep the city running. So that's not the way you run a city, when you actually don't have reserves to cover your, cover yourself. I mean, where did the budget cuts come from? Fires dedicated, so you got police. We give $9 million to the police. Community services, recreation, the senior center, a food bank, or cut all the community events out. Music in the park, movies in the park, Food Truck Fest, any of the heritage festivals around here, any of the parades we have in the City of Kenner. We spent the last three years trying to save every dime we can to have a healthy fund balance. And I just think at this time, it's probably not a good thing to take a million dollars out just to put into a council fund that has pretty healthy balances now, and you're going to, every year, at least get $136,000. We anticipate it's going to go up from there also in years to come with the treasure chest and some of the agreements we have with them. I just think this amendment would just put, the city would take a step backwards. That's it. Look, if y'all vote for it, that's, y'all can vote for it. I'll think about it, and we may be revisiting this at the next council meeting, you know, after the vote's taken. We'll see. And then, look, it's just, that's my opinion. We have different, you know, we all get along, we all do things, but I, the whole, the health of the overall city is what I'm sitting and have to do. I know each district has a ton of needs, you know. I just, you know, like Councilman Ronnie has the absolute worst street in the City of Kenner, in this district. I know there's, there's major, major problems, but just as a principle, I would be opposed to this budget amendment.
Any further discussion on the amendment?
Yes.
Yes, also, but also.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to respond to Mayor Glazer, and if any other councilman, of course, can go after me. I highly disagree that this is some type of pet project thing. It's, we have streets crumbling all around the city, and I know every district has them. I have, I have street corners that look like bombs went off that I just fixed with Christine Calamari. You know, there's, in terms of what the council does, I, you know, some people think that we show up and vote and do the budget every year, but I think it's a lot more than that. We're contacted by our constituents for problems in our districts. We have to be able to control some of that, to repair things. And look, seven brains up here, including the at-larges, we're going to get money now that we've authorized in that vote, that ordinance two years ago. You know, seven brains to help you guys make city repairs is, I think, is a great thing. I mean, this is not, we're not just taking money, we're going to use it for, you know, projects. I mean, Councilwoman Dunn is almost out of money. Brian's low. Yeah, and there's, yeah, Ronnie, of course, has, you know, the worst street in Kenner and Roosevelt. Everybody knows that. And it's, this is not a pet project thing. This is something that we need, that the citizens want. You know, you look at Facebook all the time, people talk about the streets are crumbling, and, you know, we're in South Louisiana, so the streets do crumble, we're in soft-clay soil, but we need to be able to control that. And, and I think it is good government because, you know, predating this administration, you look back in time and a lot of, just talk to people about the past and the governments here, and there's been previous administrations that have tried to hold the treasure chest money essentially hostage during periods of emergencies and not, and not give the council any direct money to do projects. That, that's not anything that you guys have done. This is a long time ago. So to be able for us to control making the repairs, making things happen in our districts, and having the at-larges who show up here, who now are going to have money to help around the city. I mean, they're going to be the most popular people, and I'm going to call them, "Hey, you want to combine this and get this done?" And they can make that choice. So I think it's great. I think it's a good government move to have this money. The general fund balance, as you said when you started, is a lot healthier than it was when you took office, and I think it's, I think that's incredible. You know, the revenues are up, and I think it's a good time to do this. So I'm supporting the amendment.
Councilmember Branigan?
Yeah, I, I don't view this as, you know, something to go out and all of a sudden we have an election next year and we go and fix stuff. I've been fixing stuff since day one because my predecessors, they didn't do anything. And I was lucky, I was left with probably $800,000 in my account, and now I'm down to $240,000, $250,000, Liz. So, you know, I, that's not my MO. But I think that if this will help with fixing things in the districts and, and help out public works. And that's why I like it. But I'm not here to go do a whole bunch of projects. I had a prior person tell me, "Oh, you don't do that till year three." I said, "Well, you do it your way and I'll do it my way," and my way worked.
Councilmember McKenney?
Thank you. Excuse me. I've been kind of quiet, but I, with regard to this, I really think that I've always been a proponent of increasing the capital budget. Our capital budget is entirely too low. To me, this is just a step in the right direction to increase the capital budget and increase what we're actually going to be able to do and give a little council discretion with regard to that. So I'm, I'm obviously in favor of this. I think, you know, I worked with Joey and his, with his idea. So I really think that, you know, this is, I understand the mayor's concerns, I understand, you know, why are we doing it this year? I would have been more than happy to do it three years ago, or two years ago, or 10 years ago, while I wasn't in here 10 years ago. But anyway, I, I think that this is something that needs to be done, if only to put more capital and to be able to sustain and do the things that the citizens need done. Obviously, as an at-large, I'm in favor of getting equality for the at-larges as well. I just really think that this is something that needs to get done, and hopefully we can sustain it over the years. This is also, you know, something that we, we, it gives us the ability to build on our successes as well as help the citizens and move in the right direction. Thank you.
Councilmember Dunn?
Yes. As far as this budget is concerned, you know, even with the firemen, they walked out. But I've always supported the firemen, but I always ask the question about the law. So as long as this council is following the law, then I will do that. As far as the budget, I've never had enough money to do anything really in my district, even though I got more done, but not having the funds was, it was very disheartening. And I know my district is very much in need. You know, I don't have any money. I'm totally broke because I wanted to see projects moved. So that's where I am on this.
Councilmember Branigan?
Yes, I've been informed that. I made a mistake. We are not the second highest-paid fire department with the second highest-paid starting salary. So I wanted to make sure for the record that is straightened out.
Anyone else on the amendment? On the amendment? Councilman Wilmot?
Yeah, I'd just like to add that, and I understand the mayor's position, and rightfully so, he is apparently opposed to this amendment. But at the same time, council is going to be, should be for it, I would think, every, every member here. Because this gives a little bit more autonomy to the council, and it allows us to do what we need to do to help our citizens. That's all. Thank you.
Councilman Schwarth?
Thank you, ma'am. I do have concerns, and believe it or not, it's not with this council, it's with the next council and a council after that. We use our funds alike for the Roosevelt project. We had $1 million probably in engineering that the city paid for, that close. So if the administration comes and says, "Well, that's what'll come out of your budget." So it's like, would we, that would, that would wipe us out on a, on a high project. And we're limited to how much we actually get. If it's $250,000 a year, well, that really doesn't go far. You know? So then we use our money, then we have to go into the Public Works Fund, and then you say, "Well, we're..." If that mayor, the administration at that time doesn't like you, they can come up and say, "Well, you used your money, you're not going to get anymore." You kind of scratch your head like, we're limited, we're going to limit ourselves to whatever money that we have in our discretionary funds when Public Works has a lot of money to be working with. So I'm split on this right here, really, because we're limiting ourselves. When we got more that from Public Works, and also, it's, we work together, guys, gals. We work together, administration, the council. We work together with Christine and Public Works, we work with Ms. Joanne and Wastewater. We all work together. When we start doing like this, then we may not, in future councils, they may not work together like we are. And I'm thinking, and I'm worried about, if we pass this like this, our future predecessors, they're going to be limited to money. Would the money still come out? The money that we're getting come out of Public Works? That we want to get this, where would that money come from?
Can't tell you. If it passes, we'll look at it and see. I mean, that's, you know, you can't...
You know, I mean, it's like, we still wait to say, "We got a project going on, and Public Works is going to bid it out," things like that, and we still come out of our fund, okay? Well, does it, was it the difference? Except for we have control over how much money we spend. So we spend the money, then we don't have any more money left, then what happens? Do we go to Public Works? And they say, "Oh, nope, you used your money, you don't get anymore." So I see both sides of this. Joey, can you help me out on, help me out on this?
It shouldn't, it shouldn't ever work like that in good government, where if you run out of money and there's a project and the mayor administration says, "No, you're out of money, you can't fix the street and stuff like that," I mean, that's just bad. You know, you'd hope this city would never, ever get to a, that, you know, situation.
Council Chair, this is only for this budget. There's no legislation about any future budgets. This is just for this coming year, that's all. There's not, there's no, like, this is just this coming fiscal year.
Councilmember Brennan?
Repeat that, please, councilman? Yes?
Yeah, this, the amendment is giving each seat $150,000 from the general fund for this year.
So it's not going forward, so is that correct?
Yeah.
So I, I respect what the mayor is saying, and I understand what he's saying. And I didn't realize that. I was thinking this was something we were going to do going forward, and...
You would have to have an ordinance dedicating revenue moving forward. This is just amending this current budget.
This is a one-time...
A one-time thing. This is. I can't say if something's coming in the future, but I can say this is just a one-time thing. This is not going to set, set it up that we have to do this every year.
Understood. I appreciate your comments, Councilman Schwarth, and what everybody has said. And I, and I've been sitting here going, you know, my money has been low previously, and the administration has helped out, every department has helped out. I mean, what the mayor's saying is, you know, it's not, I don't think it's going to be, "Sorry, you're out of money," and "Good luck with that." So I think it's a good idea to have some more money. But again, I don't know that we needed to do this, although I was very excited when I first heard about it. But as time has gone on and thought, and have really thought about it, I, you know, the money's here, the money's there. I think it's just a matter of, you know, whether it's actually in, in the district funds. So I think on this, I'm, Councilman Lahat, I know you put a lot of work into it, I think I'm going to have to err on the side of caution and stick with the mayor's thought on this to leave that money where it is at this point.
Any more discussion on the amendment that's on the floor? Seeing none. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
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 All councilmembers opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
Councilmember Brennan and Councilmember Schwarth are opposed. Motion to amend passes 5-2. Back to your original motion as amended, to you, back to your original ordinance as amended. Any discussion on the ordinance before? Councilmember Wilmot?
Thank you. And I'm going to circle back to Ms. Dufresne, and hopefully, hopefully, I pronounced it correctly this time, I apologize for earlier. Now, as far as this vote's concerned, for this, this is on the budget, so, operating budget. So vote for or against, this is the entire budget.
It's an entire budget.
So we can't, it's not piecemeal vote.
You can come back later and amend.
It's all one vote.
One vote.
Up or down?
Up or down.
Okay. Wanted to make sure that that was clear. And also, I just wanted to thank Councilman Branigan for his efforts and his research and so forth. He put a lot of time and effort into this one. So thank you, sir. That's all I have.
Anybody else? Councilmember McKenney?
Oh, yes. Thank you. So I wanted, I didn't make any comments when, after the fire personnel and everyone was talking about fire. And I do feel very compassionate to them, and I understand both sides. I feel like the administration did do a lot of diligent work, and I think the issue really is, you know, there's a, the pay plan, that there's a, you know, there's a disconnect on what the expectations of the pay plan, and it's the lowest common, you know, like, we're following the law to the letter, which obviously, we are doing that, and I feel like in this juncture, that's with the lawsuit, and in this instance, that is what we, where we need to fall. I do think that in the future, we need to, you know, obviously, the, you know, the fire, firefighters and the firemen and the whole entire fire department, I'm very concerned about the, you know, the, the issues and the, the, basically, you know, like, the unhappiness of the workforce versus the leadership. I think that that needs to, we need to look at that, and I think that as a council, that concerns me very, you know, as a council member, that concerns me very much, because I don't want, I always believe that, you know, if you're a public servant, you're, you're going in regardless of what your feelings are, and you're going to do the best job that you can. And I hope that that's the case for every employee, you know, be from the fire chief to the newest firefighter. We, we want to do what's best as, we, as the council, we are, we heard you, we understand, we want to, we want to understand more. And we want, you know, we, through the millage that was passed, last, over last, you know, over the past year, we're just, you know, the administration is just getting started. They're doing a lot of things, like as the mayor said, you know, from equipment all the way to pay. I do understand that, that the concerns of, you know, after, there are a lot of veteran firefighters and fire employees that have worked longer than the, you know, that 23rd year, and I'm concerned about them. I, I want, I'm asking them to work with us. I'm asking them to stay. Don't give up on the council, don't give up on the administration, don't give up on the fire administration. We want, we all have the same goal, which is to do the best for the citizens of Kenner, provide the highest quality fire service. You know, it's, it's not just, you know, the administration or the fire administration. We all hear this, and we want to do the, what's best. Right now, this is, we're going in the right direction, and I think there's still work to be done. So just work, you know, don't give up on us, we're right, we're moving in the right direction. So that's what I want to say.
Councilman Schwarth? Councilman Shaworth?
Thank you. I want to go back to the firemen. I got a little tad bit here that I kind of pulled up off of the internet. First is going to go. A raise typically indicates an increase in salary, often linked to individual performance or promotions. A pay adjustment, on the other hand, is a broader term compensating any change in employee's pay, which may be increased or decreased. This change can be due to market conditions, job role changes, or internal pay equity. Raises is usually to base five merit. Another thing is the difference between a fireman and a firefighter. Firefighter are often used interchangeably, but there's a subtle difference in their usage or condemnation. Firefighter has been long accepted into the fire service, warranting the change to firefighter to include both men and women. All firefighters and firemen perform ventilation, fire suppression, other fire-related skills like search and rescue, housing vehicle extrications, scene management, to name a few, when answering the call. Yet, still sometimes used today, but is more likely to be used in historical contexts, or referred to someone who excels in the craft of firefighting, regardless of gender. Firefighter is a more modern term and gender-neutral term that is now the preferred term for all people who work for the fire department in response to emergencies. The term firefighter goes all the way back to 1716, when the fire brigade was established in Paris. They called those who worked on the brigade "pompiers," which translate to firefighter. The term "fireman" has an unknown origin, but is likely steeped in the gender prejudices that other genders besides men have encountered. Many of the first firemen were males, but others were females. In most instances, they were volunteers. However, the use in the fire first responder realm are inherently gender-neutral. For example, officers are either, are of either gender. While women in fire service has been never more common than now, women still only make up about 5% of the total fire service, which makes female fire officers even less common. Should you use the term "fireman" or "firefighter"? I've spoken with lots of firefighters about this language, and the most agree that firefighter is the best description for the job. While any woman considered it's an honor to be called a fireman, and they take back their power from generations of gender stereotypes, there is a lot of weight associated with the term "fireman." Words being given, the firefighters are given a 40% raise, or 40% pay increase. Well, are we doing firefighters in general as everybody is a firefighter? Or are we doing as a firefighter as the position of firefighter? Position of firefighters have been given a 40% raise. And thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, you have done so much more for the fire department than any other mayor. I can't tell you how much I appreciate that. But on the other hand, I got to tell you, all firemen, you'd be the first mayor that not give them the minimum 2%. You're stuck between a hard place and rock. I got to tell you, you're in a bad spot. So as far as the budget goes, I would like to see proposed that all the fire personnel, all, receive 2% raises. Should I say 2%? Cost of living raises across the board, everyone, and not just the employees, between 3 and 23. Ladies and gentlemen, we put ourselves into this predicament. Forty years, there was no millage increase. If we only went one-half or 1% per year, we would not be in the shape we're at today. We are to blame for that. The overtime, the pay, we used to work a 24/48 schedule, only gave us 96 hours on a pay scale, on each paycheck. Now, the, the schedule that they got is crazy. You're on, off, on, off for so many days, and it's a built-in overtime, a seven, 17, 24 hours on paid periods. They got more overtime because the men work an extra day, or even a day and a half per month more. Therefore, you're going to accrue the overtime, and you're going to get more. You work it, you got to get paid for it. 24/48, you didn't have all that overtime. And the pay, you didn't get paid as much, because you did not work it. There's ways to go about this. The prior administration put the safer grant into play without a way to pay for it. Again, you can't hire 25, 30 new people, put another truck in service, and not have a way to pay for those people. We got stuck with that bill. We got stuck with it, okay? I, it's just, we are paying again for prior administrations. We're trying to fix it. It's going to take a while. This millage is a Band-Aid on cancer. I tried to tell people that when they were going to pass it. I said, "It's just a temporary fix, it's not a permanent fix." Councilman LaHatt, you're absolutely correct. There is no transparency within the fire department, none. And that comes straight from the fire chief. I got a police chief right here that tells us all the time, "Come see me, you want to know questions, I'll answer them." Come budget time, he's over there, he's explaining his budget to us. I don't see anything from the fire chief. We got repairs to the fire stations. To me, the millage, we got the money beginning of the year for the fire department. February, we should have seen ordinance for construction for the repair of the fire stations. We see nothing. The fire chief says he's got a letter from the Attorney General saying that the educational supplemental education pay, can't do that. Well, I never saw that letter that said it can't do it. I never saw the letter asking, and I never saw the letter answering. Never saw a letter. I just don't see anything. There's no transparency within the fire department at all, none. That's for our citizens, that's for this council, none. Something's got to change. And I don't think it's this council. I think the chief's got to change. He's got to step up. He's either going to have to tell us what's going on, or he's going to have to find another job. Because I got no confidence, none. There's repairs in the station that should have been done in February, and there's none done. Fire trucks, like the mayor said, you just don't go in a lot and buy one. They got to be set up two years in advance. The PAIL, I have no faith in that. It, I am not a fan of that. It's, if you really knew, the intern works. And again, that's not even transparent. The mayor, the chief, the members of PAIL, they meet, we're not even invited. We can't sit in on it. Where's the transparency in that? Don't like it, don't like it one bit. Never did. Retired member from the Kenner Fire Department. I'm telling you, I've seen the bad, I've seen when we worked two men to a truck. Now, we got five. It's great for firefighter safety, we do the same jobs we did then, we do now. The guys put their life on the line. PTSD, we said, our military troops have it. If I tell you some of the things I remember as a fireman, half of y'all will be vomiting on the ground right now. I can still see vividly washing flesh and blood off of the interstate. Those days. Firefighters deserve it. The state, the statute states minimum, minimum. If we can afford it, we should pay them. If we can't, we need to find ways to pay them. It's hard, the citizens of Kenner, we got to blame ourselves for letting ourselves get into this predicament that we're in today. Don't blame the council, don't blame the mayor, we got to blame ourselves. We got to set right the ship. This increase we got now, it's just way overdue. Mr. Gregg, still out there? Mr. Richard, you know where I'm coming from. It's tough, but if we only paid an extra $50 a year, we wouldn't see the $400 that we paying today. We could have easily absorbed that over the years. We need it, Mr. Mayor, we're in a tough spot. But I'm in a tough spot too. The firemen, unless it's amended, I, all of them, all firefighters should be getting the 2%, sorry.
Councilmembers, please vote on the ordinance as amended. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
Motion passes 4-2. Councilmembers Wilmot and Shaworth are opposed. Next on the agenda, we have correspondence, reports from the mayor, CAO, or department heads. At the request of the administration, an executive session to discuss the following matter. Maria Electesia Garcia and Rosa Vilma Garcia Venegas versus the City of Kenner, Kenner Police Department at all, 24th Judicial District Court, number 855-328-division P. Have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember McKenney, to adjourn into executive session. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 6-0. Councilmember Brennan has left the meeting, he's now absent.
If everyone could please take a seat, we're gonna reconvene the meeting.
Thank you, Rob. I got that thumbs up. Yeah.
Chief, you gonna sit there? You'll sit there?
All right, everyone, can I have your attention, please? Everyone.
I have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember McKenney, to reconvene from executive session. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 6-0. Mr. Chairman, at this time, we've received a request to change the order of business to take item 15O at this juncture in the meeting. I have a motion by Councilmember Branigan, seconded by Councilmember Lahat, to change the order of business. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 6-0. Item 15O is summary ordinance number 13,827, an ordinance approving the health insurance policy and rates for health insurance coverage for the City of Kenner employees, retirees, and dependents for the fiscal year July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026. I have a motion by Councilmember Lahat, seconded by Councilmember Sharwood. Any discussion on the matter? Mr. Chairman, we've received a request to amend this item. Oh, no, I'm sorry. That's the next item that we will amend. Is there any discussion on this item, 15O? Seeing none? Oh, Councilmember McKenney?
Yes, thank you, Council Clerk. I just have a question. Is this the increase, is the health insurance increases what you were referring to, is the 8% increase, or is this different? Yes, it's the same? Or it's 8%?
8.1%.
8.1%. Okay. Okay, that's all. Thank you.
We only had one bidder again, or anybody?
You want a little history of it? We have Nick Empastado can tell you anything you wanna know, sitting in the audience.
Gotcha. Sir, can you please take the podium?
Yeah, we had another respond, respond, so he'll tell you what we faced.
Please tell us some a little bit about the policy and what we're looking for and what's it gonna be concerning, things like that?
Basically, you have possible Blue Cross and program is set up to where the employees can choose between a network that's gonna be basically done by all hospital facilities or by another group which we have other hospitals called Signature Blue. Gives them an opportunity, so they can choose what group of doctors they wanna work with, stay with, gives them that flexibility. Eliminates forcing them to see one particular doctor, so those. In order to have changed that, they would have lost that and would cost them more money if they chose, and we have to go straight, um, and fill out again. Start off with better than a 12.5% increase. What we did last year was monthly, our group, so we work monthly on the expenses that were incurred by the city. The way, the way your plan goes, you're gonna be charged increases according to your experience. To define experience, that means how much money Blue Cross is paying.
Compared to how much they receive in premium. You had better than 100 and 50.
Compared to how much they receive in premium. You had better than a hundred and forty percent, which meant that for every dollar that they received in premium, they spent a dollar forty. So they came back with an increase, and they were biting the bullet with that, and we fought it, we got it down. They came back with a ten point nine percent. I said, city can't, we can't go back with a ten point nine. They came back with an eight point one. Saved you a lot of phone calls.
Got you.
Because the employees were, were having a problem. So I took the bullet for you, I guess. But by doing so, it also eliminated any opportunity of somebody trying to come in, because anybody else, if we tried to go get a rate increase for the next year. One of those rate increases when we tried to get another company to take it over, came back with, I told the mayor, I said, don't be surprised if they come back a little bit cheaper. Next year, they're going to want a thirty percent increase. So they gave us a rate increase guarantee of twenty-nine percent.
How?
Kind of close. Kind of rolled the dice, knew where we were going. So I can tell you firsthand, as the agent, because I get paid by any company, I'm going to tell you Blue Cross has done things over the top for your employees. And every time I say that, I don't work for the council, I don't work for Blue Cross. I work for every one of your employees that goes to the doctor or the hospital every day. I'm the one they call. Any other company they go to, they're going to call the one eight hundred number. Your employees have an opportunity, I made a promise to the mayor, and I'll keep that promise as long as he is mayor, that they don't have to call that one eight hundred number, they call me. We have different people that are appointed to your cases, and that's why Blue Cross has done, in my opinion, a hell of a job. Problem that we have is we have an aging community. Okay?
Hey, you talking, you saying I'm getting old?
Yeah, so, you know, it's the fireman that give me a lot of crap, you know? But you have an aging population, which means there are more people getting sick. When I showed you, you have, the one thing that you have going for you is the HIPAA laws. So we don't know who the sick people are. We just know they are sick. First claim for the year was eight hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars that they paid in claims, one employee. So we can say, well, I have a healthy group here. However, their spouses may not be healthy, their children aren't healthy. Blue Cross has gone over the top to accommodate and to keep this, and they're, they're only allowed a fifteen percent increase. I mean, fifteen percent profit. So anything above that, they would give us back as a refund. So right now, we're at an eight point one. They're willing to take it. And the reason is, is because we're trending better. When I told you we look at the expenses each month, we know what to expect. So I said, two months before we got a renewal, what I was expecting, that I was hoping to keep it at ten percent. Well, we got it down to eight point one. So personally, you don't have to thank me. I'm telling you, I did a damn good job. But that's all I can tell you. You know, other than that, I do sing, too, if you want me to.
You're making out of me because I haven't been to a doctor in four years. So you're doing-
And that's a problem, and that's what we're handling. That is a definite, I'm glad you said that, you helped me. The problem that we have is that you have a lot of employees that don't go to the doctors. That's why we're enforcing, or not enforcing, inviting everybody to the health fair. And that's why we're going to have people coming out, because what we found the first time that we mandated that everybody sees a doctor at least once, we had eleven people that had undiagnosed diabetes. We had seventeen people that had blood pressure waiting for a stroke, and this was all people that hadn't seen a doctor in ten or eleven years. So one thing that Blue Cross is doing for us, at no expense to us, is providing the assistance to try to get us healthy. The first time we did that, we brought out, the first time we enforced that, we, we brought our experience down from one twenty-nine to seventy-nine percent. In order for an insurance company to be profitable in health insurance, they got to stay between seven, seventy-nine and eighty-five percent experience. They're at a hundred and thirty, okay? So we can't, you're talking about the budget. Well, they got a budget. They can't work at a thirty percent loss. And so that's where we are. So by every one of your departments assisting us in getting their employees to go get these physicals done, this blood work done, whatever they need done, we'll find things and prevent cost in the future.
That's the ones we have at over the pavilion?
Well, the pavilion is the health fair.
Oh, okay.
But they're going to have dates that I can't say they're going to have unless you say, okay, you're going to renew. But I, I'm ready to shoot the gun and set them up if you're okay.
But, yeah, look, healthcare is rising everywhere. I mean, dude, and we really don't have any control over it, truthfully. I mean, it's, it is what it is. You're doing your best, your part, your company, everything, to try to keep us at as low as we, as we can. I sure appreciate that, with your work and the mayor's.
Ronnie, I have, excuse me, I have too many friends in the City of Kenner and most of your employees. I've coached too many of these people's kids. To me, this is, this isn't a job. This is a privilege to work for the city, and that's the way I treat it, and I will continue treating it that way.
Sir, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Wellmott?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I just had a quick question.
No, I can't do any better if I don't do it.
No, this is, this is something I'm sure you're going to be aware of. But as far as the, the health fairs, when we have these health fairs, they're free to the employees, correct? Even, even though they may have had recent lab work through their primary care?
I'm sorry?
When you have these health fairs, the health fairs are put on free of charge to the employees, correct?
The health fair that we're putting on is to introduce everybody to everything and to answer any questions the employees have. Then they have the screening test.
Right.
Okay.
Well, that's what I'm referring to, the screening test.
The screening test you're talking about.
So they're, they're free to the employees, even though the city workers, even though they may have had recent lab works through their primary care?
The employees not required, they don't have to go. If they don't go, if they have proof of it, we would know that, correct?
Have to go when they don't get the discount.
Oh, to get the discount, got to go.
So even if they just had lab work done, they have to get the screening again as well?
That's city.
Those, those results are kept separately.
So, yeah, the results are separate, so there's no, no additional charge to the employee?
No, 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 no.
That's what I just wanted.
No, not at all.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
But they get a discount?
Yes.
So there is an additional charge. If they don't go and get it done, they're going to pay more.
Thank you for that clarity.
It's a choice.
Yes.
That they make.
Thank you.
But I, I was correct in saying they don't have to go. It's just going to cost them more if they don't.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Branigan?
Oh, thanks for beating them down.
Thank, thank you for all your help.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, all councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. At this time, I have a request to change the order of business to take item fifteen P at this juncture in the meeting. I have a motion by Councilmember Branigan, seconded by Councilmember Lahat, to change the order of business. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item fifteen P is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand eight hundred and twenty-eight, an ordinance ratifying the policy and rates for commercial property insurance for the City of Kenner for the policy year June first two thousand twenty-five through May thirty-first two thousand twenty-six. I have a motion by Councilmember Branigan, seconded by Councilmember Sharwood. Do we have a presentation?
Uh, we got-
If not, I have an amendment that we can put on the floor. You may want to do that first. We've received a request to amend this item, that we would be adding a section one to state that the council ratifies the recommended proposals for Lloyd's, Howden, and Homeland Insurance Company of New York for the period of June first two thousand twenty-five through May thirty-first two thousand twenty-six. I have a motion by Councilmember Branigan, seconded by Councilmember Sharwood, on the amendment. Any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, all councilmembers in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero to amend. Back to your original motion as amended. Is there any questions, comments? Seeing, mayor?
I, um, does this has anything to do with Ida claims or anything that we have in the past? I mean, same company? There you are. Yes, ma'am.
The Ida claims continue to have an effect on the pricing. There's two buildings, based on the last report we have, that still have some outstanding renovations or repairs that need to be made. So, so that remains. And those, and those claims are still open on the loss run, which I attached as, as an amendment to my report. So you can see where we stand on those losses. So two, the two large claims are still open until those two final buildings get completed and they can close out those, those two claims.
You talking about the, I'm sorry, the Wilbur GM?
The Pont, no, the Pontchartrain Center and the plant number three building. Let's see.
Ms. Stuprin, how are we standing on those lawsuits?
Actually, just had an update yesterday. We're trying to keep everything on schedule. We have some depositions. I've gotten some deposition dates from, from our, our staff, KPD. They're just trucking along. They can't make it go any faster. They're anticipating them trying to, the other side trying to maybe slow it down at some point, and we're, I'm telling them, we need to keep it going, and they don't want to. So hopefully, we keep our dates.
And we're still all outstanding on all of that?
Still outstanding.
And it's the same company, and it's the same company still dealing with?
No, we're still dealing with them. Same company, still dealing with all the claims. We're doing some, some FEMA repairs for the FEMA money. So we're trying to get everything just to make with the prayers we can make and go forward, cross our fingers for this year.
And this is usually somebody that we always have dealt with? I mean, we don't have, we can't shop around and go try to get somebody else, can we?
Oh, insurance companies, no. There is commercial and the amount that we need, no. We're kind of stuck. Kind of like your home, like your homeowners, kind of stuck.
We moved carriers last year from AmRIS, who was on the Ida claim. They're not on this policy anymore. It's with Lloyd's. Lloyd's Howden, and we got better pricing, and, and AmRIS had all these restrictions on their policy the last few years, in twenty-three and twenty-four, that were just ridiculous. And so we, it took, it took another year, but we, we got a quote, USI got a good quote last year, and so we moved coverage to Lloyd's for a better premium, better conditions, less restrictions, less exclusions, less conditions. It's just better all the way around. So any new losses, new hurricanes, won't be under the policy of AmRIS. It'll be under this Lloyd's policy, which is, which is a much better policy than what you had.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Lahat?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. What's the, what's the coverage limit on the new policy to the, our public buildings?
So you have a twenty million dollar limit on named storm.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And fifty million for all other perils, such as fire, such as that.
I think it was ten last year. It was something really low.
Well, it was ten when we had the council meeting, but y'all gave the mayor the ability to-
We did, yes.
Negotiate after that, and we got, for a, a, a minimal increase in premium, we got them to increase the limit for named storm from ten million to twenty million.
Okay.
So we bound twenty million last year, and the quote this year is for twenty million named storm. Now, the broker has advised that if you want more limit, if you want an additional ten million named storm only, excess of the twenty that you have, they can go out and market that. They think they could get another ten million for about a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay.
If you approve that, we will tell them to go do it. But right now, you've got twenty, and the total premium, we, we just received while we were here, a note from the broker, that they got the excess premium down. So our, our total is a little bit less than it is in the report for the primary and excess right now.
How much is that? How much is it?
And it came out at one million, one four zero, five oh five eighty-eight, instead of one, I put my glasses on, put that on.
Okay.
Instead of one million, one forty-three, six fifty-one, thirty-eight. So that was a twenty-five hundred dollar reduction, plus tax and fees reduced, reduced.
Okay.
So right now, you're looking at two hundred and sixty-four thousand, seven forty-six, twenty-five less than what you paid last year for the same coverage limits, same coverage structure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Seeing no further discussion, all councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. At this time, we will entertain a motion and a second by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember McKenney, to add item three A, which is application number twenty-four sixty-seven dash twenty-five, Davis Cincino, to hold a public gathering on May twenty-fourth two thousand twenty-five from twelve PM to six PM, for the purpose of a family reunion at Betsy B. Hammond Park, five oh two Salvador Road, Kenner, Louisiana, to the agenda. I have, all councilmembers in, is there anyone in the audience wishing to object to the council amending the agenda to add this item? Please come forward. Seeing none, all councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Under the consent agenda, we have item one, approval of minutes, the regular council meeting of May eighth two thousand twenty-five. Item two is approval of alcoholic beverage permit applications. We have none. Item three is approval of bingo and public gathering applications. Item three A is application number twenty-four sixty-seven dash twenty-five, Davis Cincino, to hold a public gathering on May twenty-fourth two thousand twenty-five from twelve PM to six PM for the purpose of a family reunion at Betsy B. Hammond Park at five oh two Salvador Road in Kenner, Louisiana. I have a motion by Councilmember Wellmott, seconded by Councilmember Branigan, to approve the consent agenda. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Under the public appearance agenda, we have item eight, public hearings and final passage. Item eight A was taken earlier. Item eight B is a public hearing regarding summary ordinance number thirteen thousand eight hundred and twelve, an ordinance adopting the capital budget for the City of Kenner for the fiscal year beginning July first two thousand twenty-five and ending June thirtieth two thousand twenty-six. I have a motion by Councilmember Wellmott, seconded by Councilmember McKenney, to open the public hearing. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Motion passes six zero. We're now in a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this matter, please come forward now. Seeing none, I have a motion by Councilmember Wellmott, seconded by Councilmember McKenney, to close the public hearing. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. I have a motion by Councilmember Wellmott, seconded by Councilmember McKenney, to approve. I have a motion to amend this item. If I could, the clerk will read it into the record. We will be amending the legislation by adding section four to read, that the proposed budget was amended by the council before adoption to increase the transfer to the capital budget by one million, fifty thousand dollars to be distributed equally to the seven council persons to be used for capital purchases. I have a motion by Councilmember Branigan, seconded by Councilmember McKenney, on the amendment. Any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Back to your original motion as amended. All councilmembers in favor, please-
Should be section five.
Sorry, we have one more amendment before we vote on it. We will also be entertaining a, an amendment at the request of the Finance Department to amend the legislation to add section five, to read that the proposed budget was amended by the council before adoption to correct an error in the capital projects expenditure list for a net zero change. I have a motion by Councilmember Branigan, seconded by Councilmember McKenney, on the amendment as the clerk has read. Councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Back to your original motion as amended. Motion by Councilmember Wellmott, seconded by Councilmember McKenney. Councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes- Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item 8C is a public hearing regarding resolution number B, 17447, a resolution calling a public hearing on May 23, 2025, to determine whether the structure is located at 3704 California Avenue in Kenner, Louisiana, shall be abated by repair, rehabilitation, demolition, or removal. I have a motion by Councilmember Lahat, seconded by Councilmember Sharwood, to open the public hearing, and the Code Enforcement Department has a presentation.
Good morning. Catherine Topple, Director of Inspection and Code Enforcement for the City of Kenner. The structure that we're bringing forth today for demolition is located at 3704 California Avenue. Its property is owned by Mr. Edward Bruce Adamson. On March 18, 2025, it was determined the property was unsafe and dangerous under the building codes for the City of Kenner, as well as section 5-57 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Kenner. On March 20, 2025, we noticed was sent by certified mail to the property owner advising of the property violations. The daughter of, I believe, Mr. Edward Bruce Adamson initially contacted our office by telephone, stating the property was in a tax sale and she didn't believe that they owned it any longer. We followed up with an email on April 28 informing, she followed up with a female informing the office that they're still waiting to receive statistics, vital statistic records on her father and grandfather. I believe that's how it was. Her email further stated, there's a company in the process of buying, demolishing, and rebuilding the structure. This structure was previously put on hold for demolition three years ago by the City of Kenner. It is noted in the report of the engineer retained by the City of Kenner that the utilities are disconnected, the structure is abandoned and uninhabited. Personal furnishing furniture is still in the interior of the structure. Exterior doors are open, allowing access to the interior of the structure. The grass around the structure appears to be maintained. The soffit at the front entrance is severely rotted and is about to fall off the structure. Sections of the soffit and fascia are missing or rotted throughout the perimeter of the entire home. Wood rot was observed at the ends of both roof joists. Roof shingles and sheathing are missing at the rear of the structure. Interior of the structure is exposed to all the elements. Severe wood rot observed throughout the exposed roof trusses and framing. Some of the roof trusses and framing have collapsed at the rear of the building. The collapsed roof trusses framing at the rear have compromised the lateral stability of the gable wall framing, thus causing it to lean. Other sections of the exposed roof trusses framing are compromised and are in danger of collapse.
Yeah.
Based on this report of the engineer, the structure is a serious public hazard, and we recommend the city take steps necessary to have it abated by demolition. I would note today, one of the property owners is present at the hearing today. They mentioned that they do have a potential buyer interested in demolishing and rebuilding on the property. Don't know whether that's a buildable lot, don't know if it's a lot of record. He also mentioned, which they're here to speak, but he also mentioned that the person who's interested in buying it says that the liens would have to be under $30,000. I don't know what the liens are on the property at this moment in time. My concern is that this has already been put on hold once, three years ago, for demolition, and that we sit here still with this property in severe rot and danger of collapse, honestly. And as everybody here is aware, unfortunately, kids being kids like to explore places like that a lot of times. And even if it's boarded up, they find ways in. So the city is concerned that if we don't move forward, how long would this process take? Is it even possible to occur? The owner mentioned having to obtain a death certificate for his father. And so for that reason, we would like to move forward with a demolition, at least seeking approval of the demolition. Now, there's always a legal process which they can pursue if indeed something comes up where somebody purchases it and rebuilds. But at this point, the city's, this property's been in this condition for well over three years, probably closer to 10. And it's still sat unrepaired and now open to the elements and in danger of collapse.
Thank you, ma'am.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the council on this matter? Please come forward.
Yes, P. Duke.
Please state your name and address for the record, sir.
I'm Edward Adamson, and I live at 4204 Asher Court, Kenner, Louisiana, apartment
Do you have any questions, or do you want to make any comments to the council regarding this issue?
Well, she covered it pretty well, but we're having a trip. My father abandoned us when I was a little child, so I didn't have any knowledge of him. And according to my mom, he moved up to New York. And his name is the primary name on the thing. When my mother died, she willed the property, put my name on the property with my father. But before her death, she said that my father was deceased in New York, but we didn't know. So when the hurricane came, and I went to FEMA because I couldn't afford to do anything with the property, a FEMA person came up, saw the damage to the roof and all like that, said, "This house is unlivable, and you should be getting money." Never heard anything from the people at FEMA. When I finally contacted them to see what their thing is, she says, "Oh, the report says it's not enough damage to do it." The woman says, "You can't live in this house. It's unlivable." So I said, "Well, I can't afford to repair it." And so I unfortunately had to just abandon the house. And then when it came up, she said, "Three years ago." I don't actually remember when I was contacted again. But then they said that the house went to auction, and then Kenner, and then it was donated to Jefferson Parish. And she informed me that that's the regular procedure, but that's not, you still own the house. They just own the interest or the interest in the house.
You're still responsible for it, yes.
Right, which I wasn't aware of. And then when y'all contacted me again, I tried to get, I said, "Well, I can't do anything with the house because my father's name's on it, and you need a death certificate." When I tried to go through New York to get a death certificate, they said they'd have no records of that. Okay, so when y'all came to me this time, my daughter went to research it. She says, "Well, let me try." And a whole bunch of runaround, and what county and all, and it was still the same thing. No, we can't find a record of a Robert Adamson. So I don't have a death certificate for my father, and that's what's holding up the sale of the property. And the people that are going to demolish the property said, "If you can have it, like, for $30,000, to reduce the liens to $30,000, that they could demolish the house, pay all of the back taxes, all of the liens, they'll pay them, and they'll also pay the 2025 taxes, all of the taxes for 2025. And they will demolish the house and rebuild."
All the red tape that goes with it, yeah. Red, I can imagine that. Councilman Lahat, I'm pretty sure it's in your district, sir. You probably got something to say.
Yes, sir, thanks for coming. Some questions for you. When is the last time someone has lived in this house?
Not since the hurricane, when that FEMA.
Hurricane Ida, the one?
Which hurricane?
We've had a bunch.
And it was actually, it was like maybe five years after Hurricane, if somebody's lived there.
Yeah, because there's pictures I'm looking at dating back, December 2018, there's an abandoned car in front. What do y'all, what is your position? Do you do not want this house torn down right now? Is that what you're telling us? I want to know, because this is a big issue when we tear down a house that obviously has safety issues for a neighborhood. What is y'all's position right now, being the heirs or whatever you are?
Well, I'm still liable for the liens on the property, and I have a buyer. Is that not true? I'm not.
But you want the house, you want the house torn down, whether it's us or you or?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that's really the first question.
Really, as far as his concerns, he doesn't want anything to be worked out. I mean, the situation is what it is. Like, I mean, really, he thought this was worked all years ago.
Yeah. Okay.
And has someone bought the property taxes and just not petitioned for a redemption?
Is that what the status is? Do we know? That is not, you can talk, Catherine, if you.
Oh, sorry.
I'm not thinking it's a succession, it could be a state as well, right? So I probably haven't been involved in it.
Okay. Okay.
There was a 2008 tax sale to the City of Kenner, where the property was adjudicated to us. And then there was a 2010 tax sale for Jefferson Parish. There was about $35,000 in back taxes for this property.
Yeah, it's a long time. Okay, but y'all want the house torn down, but it just, the way it's done is what kind of what y'all are talking about right now. Okay, but yeah, this is in my district, and you know, there's a lot of kids in this area, and Director Topple's right. I mean, it is a huge problem, but kids that see these structures and they want to go in, and it's open to the elements. I mean, the pictures are really bad. And I mean, a kid can go in there, it's a fire hazard, there's neighbors next door, obviously, that probably wanted torn down as well. But, okay, I really thank you for answering those questions.
Thank you very much, sir.
Councilman Wellmott?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I just have the gentleman who was just up at the podium, if you will, come back.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, if, who owns this house legally? Do you know who's the owner of right? Has a succession been done and putting you as entitled owner?
The house is owned by, or, yes, owned by my father and my grandfather. My grandfather is deceased, but has been deceased since 1990. We have been unable to get a death certificate. Even when my grandmother died in 1999, even when she passed away and my grandmother, I mean, like, my mom and dad had taken ownership of the house, we weren't able to get ahold of the death certificate. And so there has been, this is the third occasion that we've tried to get the death certificate. And it's like a runaround.
So is it believed that this gentleman is the heir to the property? Or is there other people that may be involved?
No. We, I've been in contact with family that is in New York from that side of the family, and there's no other kids, there's no other wife, there's.
My brother, and my brother says he don't want any part of the property.
And this question, I guess, is for the city. Have we had anybody look into this as far as making sure that we've had the proper notices go out that cover under Mennonite and make sure that we're, we have everything that we need to do to dot our i's and cross our t's?
That's our, that's their standard operating procedure, is we wouldn't bring it to council. Catherine wouldn't bring it to council if we didn't have all of those things in order.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that, so all the notices, according to law, have gone out, and all the owners, that we believe that our owners have gotten the proper notices?
That's correct. We actually ordered an abstract on the property before we even started the notices, and everybody was sent a notice, and it was published.
Okay, and is there, do we know if there's a will in place or anything of that nature? There's no will, so this is looked upon as if it's?
There is no succession.
By relation?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, I have a motion by Councilmember Lahat, seconded by Councilmember Sharwood, to close the public hearing. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. I have a motion by Councilmember Lahat, seconded by Councilmember Sharwood. You're voting to demolish within the time allowed by law, just to clarify for the record. Any discussion? Seeing none, council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item nine is ordinances for the sale, purchase, transfer, lease, and/or alienation of immovable property. We have none. Item 10 is opening of bids. We have none. Item 11 is reclassification of zoning for final passage. We have none. Item 12 is other ordinances for final passage. We have none. Item 13 is resolutions and motions by council members. Item 13A is a resolution authorized in a settlement in the claim entitled Maria Electasia Garcia and Rosa Vilma Garcia Vinegas versus the City of Kenner, Kenner Police Department at all, 24th Judicial District Court, number 855-328-Division-P. I have a motion by Councilmember Lahat, seconded by Councilmember Branigan. Councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item 13B is a resolution electing a Kenner City Council President and Vice President, effective July 1, 2025. I have a motion by Councilmember Lahat, seconded by Councilmember Sharwood. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item 13C is a resolution exercising the second one-year renewal of the September 1, 2022 audit contract with DuPont, Ratman, Hogan, and Mayor LLP. I have a motion by Councilmember Sharwood, seconded by Councilmember Wellmott. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item 13D is a resolution exercising the second one-year renewal of the September 1, 2020, I'm sorry, we just did that one. Item 13D is a resolution selecting New Orleans Advocate as the official general for the City of Kenner fiscal year 2025 and 2026. I have a request to remove this item. It was inadvertently put on this agenda. It was approved at the last agenda. So I have a motion by Councilmember Branigan, seconded by Councilmember McKenney, to remove the item. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero to remove this item. Item 14 is items removed from the consent agenda. We have none. Item 15 is acceptance of contracts and similar matters approved by the mayor. Item 15A is summary ordinance number 13,813, an ordinance accepting the lowest response bid received from Metal Studs LLC to supply sheet rock and related materials as needed in accordance with electronic bid 25-2161, in an amount not to exceed $25,000 annually for the General Services Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Wellmott, seconded by Councilmember Lahat. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item 15B is summary ordinance number 13,814, an ordinance accepting the lowest response bid received from Salem Auto Nation LLC doing business as TTE Center to purchase one enclosed pull behind trailer in accordance with electronic bid 25-3007, in an amount not to exceed $6,499 for the General Services Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Sharwood. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item 15C is summary ordinance number 13,815, an ordinance accepting the lowest response bid received from Technology International Incorporated to furnish one HSR-A-60 roller or equal for the traffic division in accordance with electronic bid 25-2162, in an amount not to exceed $8,340 for the General Services Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Branigan, seconded by Councilmember Lahat. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item 15D is summary ordinance number 13,816, an ordinance approving an agreement with Digicom Systems Incorporated for consulting and support services for software and hardware system upgrades and other projects on an as-needed basis in an amount not to exceed $250,000 annually for the Information Technology and Telecommunications Department. I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Sharwood. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item 15E is summary ordinance number 13,817, an ordinance accepting the lowest response bid received from Lawmans and Shooter Supply Incorporated to provide 30 Type II adjustable LED RMR 3.25 MOA red dot sights in accordance with electronic bid number 25-2166, in an amount not to exceed $14,173. 25-2166 in an amount not to exceed $14,173.50 for the Kenner Police Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Branigan, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot.
Chief, can you elaborate on this? We'll guide here.
Sure. Fifteen E and fifteen F are related to the new hires and new employee. This is a much-needed equipment for the recruits. We have 14 that are going to be graduating Tuesday, and then we start another academy in July, so this is just equipment for the new recruits.
Got you, sir.
Seeing no further discussion, all councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item fifteen F is summary ordinance number 13,818, an ordinance approving amendment number two to the agreement with Momentum ECM LLC, increasing the agreement not to exceed amounts of $50,000 annually for the Kenner Police Department. I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Branigan. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item fifteen G is summary ordinance number 13,819, an ordinance approving an Astro System Advanced Package and NICE Gold Package Combined Service Agreement with Motor Roller Solutions in an amount not to exceed $60,071.43 for the Kenner Police Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember Lahat. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item fifteen H is summary ordinance number 13,820, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsibility received from Gardner LLC for the construction of a raised garden planter at Vintage Drive and Power Boulevard in accordance with sealed bid number 25-6888 in an amount not to exceed $75,400. I have a motion by Councilmember Lahat, seconded by Councilmember McKenney. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item fifteen I is summary ordinance number 13,821, an ordinance authorizing utilization of existing state contract number 4400032159 with Coca-Cola Bottling Company United Incorporated to purchase bottled water and sports drinks for the city of Kenner employees on an as-needed basis not to exceed $10,000 annually for the Department of Emergency Management. I have a motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot. Seeing no discussion, all councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item fifteen J is summary ordinance number 13,822, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsibility received from 21 Construction LLC by the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development, DOTD, in the amount of $369,993.25 for Kenner Discovery School sidewalks, state project number H period 015087, federal aid project number H 015087 for the Department of Public Works. I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Sharwood. Councilman Sharwood?
Mr. Gonzalez, sir.
What this ordinance does is allows the city to enter into a contract with 21 Construction, okay? A project that was bid by the state DOTD due to the fact that it's a federal aid urban system type project. The low bid was 21 Construction with a low bid of $369,993. This particular federal aid program, which is the TAAP program, Transportation Alternative Program, finances 80% of the construction cost of this particular project, and it's not all sidewalks, okay? We are doing a significant amount of traffic signal improvements, and we adding pedestrian crossing poles with push buttons at the intersection of Loyola and Vintage. So the $369,993 is not just all sidewalks, and it's not just all sidewalks for the Discovery School because we connecting the sidewalks to the west, you know, to West Louisiana and West Loyola, and we connecting the sidewalk to Inspire Living, and indirectly we collecting... Connecting the sidewalks to all the commercial establishments, City Park being a recreational area, and Walmart, and some of the apartment complexes. It's a good thing for the city.
Just a little bit of area... And please don't put a "do not walks" sign or "walks" sign in front of the signal over there. If you've seen that post, you know what I'm talking about. Yes, sir. Councilman Branigan?
Jose, you said that the... It's a split cost between sidewalks and a lot of traffic improvements and stuff. Do you have the split on that?
The breakdown roughly, the bid was $369,993.
Okay.
Roughly $190,000 of those dollars are based on traffic signals and pedestrian crossing improvements at the intersection of Vintage and Loyola. That's an intersection whose traffic has increased significantly because of the school, Discovery School, Inspire Living, and the City Park. So out of the $369,000, $190,000 are based on traffic-related improvements at the intersection. And then there are the two sections of sidewalks out there that do not have anything to do with the Discovery School. We got to connect the sidewalk to Inspire Living Center, and therefore, we're going to have to cross a section of property that is owned by the city along Loyola, and in order to connect to West Loyola, you know, we got to go further west and use this federal money to allow us to connect to West Loyola, which in turn can bring you to the multi-use paths along the lakefront.
Right, right, okay. And it's an 80/20 split?
It's an 80/20 split for construction, yes, under the Transportation Alternative Program.
So basically, you're looking 190 on the signal, traffic signals, and then 180 on the sidewalk?
Whatever. It's going to be...
Yeah.
It's going to be 80% of 369,993.
Okay, all right. And it's important to have this all connected so that, you know, all of our residents can use that sidewalk?
Without a doubt. It will benefit the area to the west, West Loyola, West Louisiana, all those neighborhoods. Now, they're going to have sidewalk connectivity. They're going to be able to access the school, Inspire Living, City Park, maybe even Walmart and the hospital, yes. And it will benefit also, you know, the east side because now you're going to have traffic signal improvement, pedestrian crossing improvements, or anybody coming from east Loyola will benefit from this project if they want to continue to move west.
Okay, thank you, Jose.
Seeing no further discussion? Oh, I'm so sorry.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Richard Brown?
Sorry there, Mr. Richard. I'd say stand up, but...
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Gonzalez answered most of my questions, and I appreciate those explanations very much, Jose. Thank you. My initial question was going to be, why is the city of Kenner paying almost a half million dollars to put in sidewalks around Discovery School when, as I understand, the code of ordinances that existed at the time, the contractor was obligated to put in those sidewalks? But I understand this is for a lot more than that, and I don't have a problem with those other things. But I do still wonder why, and I hope that either Mr. Gonzalez, or the mayor, or the city attorney, or the planning director can tell me why the city let the school go up without the contractor putting in sidewalks. Who can answer that?
Mr. Brown, the only answer I have to that question is that there is not a single employee left in the administration who can answer that question.
Okay, thank you.
Can I piggyback just a little bit? Natalie Newton, he actually worked for Discovery during the time, I guess, this sidewalk application. Best we can figure out is the mayor at the time probably let the school be built without sidewalks because they executed an application for this transportation alternative project where they were going to get outside funds, federal funds, to build the sidewalks. So that's the best we can put it together. It was back in November of 2020 is when a questionnaire was done, letter of support from RPC. The mayor, December of 2020, executes the application. State rep sends letter of support to DOTD. DOTD responds that suggests the city pays attention to the announcements this week, which may result in a positive news for the city. 9/17/21, council resolution passes unanimously to accept federal funds. And then that's kind of where it fell off the map after September of '21. It just died for... We have no idea why. The money was awarded, and it was never built, and as you can see now, like, this is the third project. We awarded money that the cost now is a lot more than it would have been three years ago. So that's kind of where we are today. Natalie knew of the project when she came to work here in August of '22, reached out to DOTD to get it started again, and that's kind of where we are today with this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That's the best we could put together.
I appreciate it, and I understand, and I believe you. And that answers my questions. Thank you. I don't have any problem with the project. I think we need... I think we need everything that's being done, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Richard.
All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item 15K is summary ordinance number 13,823, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsibility received from Monopoly Rental Properties to supply mesh, roll, wire, rebar, metal keyway, and chairs on an as-needed basis in accordance with sealed bid number 25-6890 in an amount not to exceed $70,000 annually for the Public Works Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Branigan. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item 15L is summary ordinance number 13,824, an ordinance approving amendment number one to the agreement with T. Baker Smith LLC dated February 3, 2023 for Kenner Discovery Sidewalk Project, state project number H period 015087, federal aid project number H 015087 for administration for the Department of Public... For professional services associated with design and construction, contract administration for the Department of Public Works. I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item 15M is summary ordinance number 13,825, an ordinance ratifying an emergency repair of the Fairbanks Morse Submersible Pump Number Two at 24th and Delaware Sewer Lift Station by Fluid Processing Pumps LLC in the amount of $15,000 for the wastewater department. I have a motion by Councilmember Sharwood, seconded by Councilmember Dunn.
Ms. Joanne, you broke another pump? I guess that was one of three? One of four? Yay. And about how old was that pump? You got any idea, maybe?
The station was last upgraded in 2012, 2013.
Oh, good, we got 11 years out the pump.
Yes.
Hey, fantastic. Thank you.
Okay.
Seeing no further discussion, all councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item 15N is summary ordinance number 13,826, an ordinance ratifying the emergency repair of the Simons Motor Number One at the 4MGD Sewer Lift Station by Precision PSI in the amount of $11,569.70 for the Department of Wastewater. I have a motion by Councilmember Branigan, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot. All councilmembers...
Ms. Joanne, same thing? Deja vu?
Yes, this motor was replaced after Katrina, so this was in 2006, so repairing it. This lift station takes in all of District Five and also takes in north and south of District Four.
It's just about replacing the old stuff?
Right.
Got you.
Can I add something to this?
Yes, sir.
4MGD Sewer Lift Station. We actually actively, what, two months ago? Kind of went out to bid to try to redo this whole... This is a major pump station, and came in how many millions over budget? Two million over budget. So we back at the drawing board to try to reduce the $2 million overage of what it's budgeted for. So it's just a major... It's a major lift station that, like she said, services a large part of the northeast side of the city that really needs to be done. I mean, this is just a... This is not even a Band-Aid. This is just holding something on, but it really needs to be replaced sooner than later. There's the one in the parking lot of the Woodlake Gym.
Woodlake, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, it's north...
Right? I'm correct?
Northwest.
North...
Northeast. You said northeast. I was thinking it was Chateau Trans.
Yeah, no, sorry. I misspoke.
That's all right.
Using Scotch tape.
Seeing no further discussion, all councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Item 15O was taken earlier. Item 15P was also taken earlier. Item 16 is ordinances and resolutions in summary for first reading. Item 16A is an ordinance amending the 2020-2021 and the 2023-2024 capital budgets to budget the increase in funds received from riverboat fees and to budget the expenditures for council manic funds. Item 16B is an ordinance amending the 2024-2025 operating budget to allocate funding to the Civil Service Department. Item 16C is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsibility received from Barco Products LLC to purchase 50 commercial trash receptacles and 50 surface mount hardware kits, including shipping, in accordance with electronic bid 25-3010 in an amount not to exceed $28,947.78 for the General Services Department. Item 16D is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsibility received from Beacon Air Conditioning, Heating, and Refrigeration Incorporated to remove, furnish, and install a new three-ton heat pump split system at Musburgerlino in accordance with electronic bid 25-2167 in an amount not to exceed $10,998 for the General Services Department. Item 16E is an ordinance approving change order number one, final to the agreement with Pipe Works Plumbing and Demolition LLC dated October 23, 2024 regarding the demolition of Kenner City Hall Building and Annex Building B, AE Project Number 20-22037B for an new increase of $43,700 to the agreement amount resulting in a total agreement amount of $557,030, and to add 10 working days and accepting the project as substantially complete by the Department of General Services. Item 16F is an ordinance amending ordinance 12,776 adopted on April 10, 2025 to correct an erroneous bid number and an award to Gauls LLC. Item 16G is an ordinance authorizing the use of state contract number 4400030934 with Applied Concepts Incorporated doing business as Stalker Radar to purchase speed enforcement radar equipment and accessories in the amount of $28,616 for the Kenner Police Department. Item 16H is an ordinance approving the use of state contract number 4400020593 with TECO Safety Incorporated to purchase ballistic body armor and accessories in an amount not to exceed $75,000 annually for the Kenner Police Department. Item 16I is an ordinance approving amendment number 11 to the agreement with ASM Global, formerly known as SMG, for management services for the Punch Train Convention and Civic Center to extend the agreement through June 30, 2026. Item 16J is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsibility received from All Star Electric Incorporated to provide traffic signal repair services in accordance with sealed bid 25-6893 in an amount not to exceed $300,000 annually for the Public Works Department. Item 16K is an ordinance approving amendment number 1 to the agreement with MSMM Engineering LLC dated February 10, 2024 for Vintage Drive Eastbound Resurfacing Improvements Duncan Canal to Power Boulevard, state project number H period 015561, federal project number H 0115561, adjusting slash increasing the fee by $8,477.50 to a total not to exceed amount of $171,333 to perform additional professional services relating to needed roadway improvements immediately east of the Duncan Canal Eastbound Bridge, and to extend the agreement by two years for the Department of Public Works. Item 16L is an ordinance approving amendment number 3 to the agreement with Gulf South Engineering and Testing Incorporated dated January 25, 2022 for geotechnical and testing related services on an as-needed basis to increase the not-to-exceed amount by $25,000 and to extend the agreement by three years for the Department of Public Works. Item 16M is an... Item sixteen M is an ordinance approving amendment number one to the agreement with B F M Corporation LLC dated September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two for surveying services on an as-needed basis to increase the not-to-exceed amount by twenty-five thousand dollars and to extend the agreement by three years for the Department of Public Works. Item sixteen N is an ordinance accepting the lowest response bid received from B L D Services LLC to provide preventive maintenance of existing sanitary and storm sewer, including service laterals, on an as-needed basis in accordance with sealed bid number twenty-five dash sixty-eight eighty-nine in an amount not to exceed seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually for the Department of Wastewater. Item sixteen O is an ordinance accepting the quote received from Precision PSI LLC, a sole-source provider to repair the Yeoman's Pump, number two, at Twenty-seventh and Salem Sewer Lift Station in the amount of seventeen thousand thirty-seven dollars and forty-four cents for the wastewater department. Item sixteen P is an ordinance approving an increase to the not-to-exceed amount established by ordinance twelve thousand five hundred and ninety-three adopted on June twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four for rental of industrial equipment on an as-needed basis with United Rentals slash North America Incorporated utilizing state contract number four-four-zero-zero-zero-two-zero-nine-two-eight by a hundred thousand dollars annually for a total not-to-exceed amount of five hundred thousand dollars for the Department of Wastewater. Item seventeen is reports from the council and our special committees. Mayor Glazer?
Uh, Splash Park opened today in the rain, so it's wonderful, right? Usually how government works. They said it's going to either open in the winter. Well, it was ready for the winter. It opens in the spring and it's raining. Uh, so we'll have a, it's open Friday, Saturday, Sunday now, but we're actually working on getting it open more days during the week. So it's probably going to, we know it's going to be closed Monday and probably Tuesdays for maintenance and it's like a swimming pool needs to be cleaned and all that. Two more weekends of music and movies in the park. Just look at our, our social media stuff to see if the weather today kind of hampers tonight. Uh, and I think, as we mentioned before, Roosevelt Boulevard between West Metairie, West Napoleon finally was bid out last week. Command Construction, uh, is a low bidder and hopefully by the end of this week, Jose, they're going to start? By the end of summer, later in the year, they'll start construction. So we know it's going to be an absolute disaster for the residents in them, that area, because it's just, they're not going to be able to access their house with cars as easily as they do now. The only saving grace is there's alleyways that can get to the backside of a lot of those houses, so.
Only some, not all.
Yeah, I said some of them, the ones that are fortunate enough to have it. But, uh, you have to start somewhere. And like I said, that is by far the absolute worst street in the city of Kenner. So hopefully nine million dollars later and hopefully more than, sooner than two years, it'll be very nice.
Few more gray hairs and complaints and our phones blowing up and like that for the next. And it's good for one year, Jose, it's going to be? How long is the project going to last, do we know?
Reconstruction, our sentence has been estimated to be two.
How many?
Three years.
Two years? Oh, Lord.
Complete reconstruction to this home, the rent is approved.
Don't we try to get this for one year? Won't happen?
Uh, one year, you would not have gotten out price that, over that six point five, you would probably be in the middle of nine point five or ten.
Okay, it is what it is. But at least the citizens that travel Roosevelt, and that, look, that's a major fairway between the Third Street here, River Road, all the way to Veterans. I mean, it's a major thoroughfare. Um, it's going to impact a lot of people, not only the residents. We experienced more traffic on Roosevelt when they were working on Williams Boulevard. Now they're going to be working Roosevelt. It's going to be the neighborhood, Williams, it's going to be a disaster. But we'll try to do the best we can, uh, keep the citizens informed what's going on. That's probably the biggest thing, let them know how the projects are going forward. But thank you. You know, it was, it was way overdue. Get rid of the trees, but get rid of the problems. Thank you.
Councilman McKenney?
Yes, thank you, Council Chair. I just want to ask the administration to give me an update on Woodlake. A couple last meeting, I, um, asked them informally to, um, come up with some information because the Woodlake Gym specifically, not the neighborhood. Because that has been, um, some questions, residents have asked me about it. I've seen it personally and I think it's, um, very upsetting to see that it's been in disrepair for so long. If you can provide me some updates and I actually have some money to help with it in the next budget, so.
Well, good luck with the amount of money that you have. Um, yes, Councilwoman, this has definitely been a hot topic, particularly on social media. And trust me, nobody wants it open more than we do. We, with the expansion of recreation programs, we could absolutely use this space. However, as was mentioned earlier in the meeting, we are still, uh, do still have outstanding litigation as it relates to Hurricane Ida, and this is part of that claim. Specifically for the gym, um, there's a discrepancy and I can't get into true details, which is kind of what I addressed with you, but there's a discrepancy of about a half a million dollars related to what the city should expect. So that project, I don't expect to see the light anytime soon. Even with a settlement, the city's still going to be responsible for a large portion, once anything is said and done with a lawsuit. As it relates to the concession, if you're familiar with the, um, facility, the concession that's, that was a build-on, uh, was considered a separate structure and our consultants have advised that they feel that we will be able to get some money back from FEMA on that. Those are, that demolition, in addition to the press boxes that surround the south side of the property, will be going out to bid, starting, the advertisement will start next week. It's about a two-month process and then we go into accepting bids. Legislation will come before council. And then finally, hopefully moving forward with demolition, I hope, before the end of this year.
And is the demolition, is that, that's only for the outside structure?
That is just for the attached concession that was a build-on from the gym. Um, and there are two press boxes that have been severely vandalized that are around the baseball fields on the property, so we included that in the bid specs.
And we don't anticipate actually demolishing the gym? The structure can be rehabbed, we believe?
I can't speak to that at this point.
Okay. Thank you for the update.
Anyone else? Next, we have item eighteen is new business. We have none. Item nineteen is unfinished business and a motions to reconsider or remove from a tabled position. We have none. Item twenty is persons wishing to address the council on special subject matters.
Mr. Gregg, sir? I don't... Okay, your name's not on our list, that's a come I'm wondering.
Okay, thank you.
Can you please state your name?
Glenda McGee, twenty-one, twenty-one, Fourth Street in Kenner, Louisiana. I'd like to thank the council for allowing me to speak. Also, I'd like to personally thank lady, Chair, Chair, uh, Chair Lady Dee Dunn and also her secretary for being prompt and addressing my concerns. On May fourteenth, I had called Council Lady Dee's Dunn, uh, Dee Dunn's, um, office and I spoke to Ms. Vivian and within five minutes, my call was returned. I spoke to her briefly. Within three hours that same day, late, Council Lady Dee called me back. On the fifteenth of May, Council Lady Dee Dunn had come to see my concerns in regard to signs, no parking placed around my home front side. I was concerned about the safety of myself, residents, citizens, and also visitors to our beautiful city of Kenner. People park in the front, on the side of our homes. The ground sinking, there are potholes. People have gotten to arguments in regard to being hit, hit and run. People at the businesses, they would back up and they would hit the cars. They left no signs or anything. Someone had gotten a verbal argument. I thought it was going to be a fistfight, maybe even a gunfight. The safety of people who reside there, visitors who come there is in jeopardy in my opinion. People will come from Williams Boulevard and they'd ride on Fourth Street. Fourth Street is a two-way street. If they cannot maneuver themselves in a certain way, they ride on the shoulder of the street where signs are placed, even on the sidewalk. We've even had people to drive on our property when they were doing movie shoots. And I'm concerned about the safety. At night sometimes, people would park, leave their cars there. You know how crime is on a rise, it's rampant? And we don't know if someone's parked there to rob us or to commit a crime. So the signs are placed there to protect residents, citizens, visitors. Also, the drainage system's concerned, the sinking of the ground. Someone could step on the side and they could go into one of those sinkholes. That's a big problem for Kenner. Someone could lose their lives. That's a big problem for Kenner.
Yes, ma'am, and I'm sure your chief will address some of those problems right there we have. As far as parking, I've got a major problem back on my, in my district in Maine with Kenner Elementary Discovery where there's not enough parking places and faculty park up and down a block. They block driveways there. It, it's major. So your situation's not unique. It's spread everywhere.
I know, it is unique.
It's a...
And like we say, our area has really grown.
Yeah?
And it's not enough adequate parking. So maybe where that parking lot is, maybe guys can decide to do a garage.
Yeah.
Because if I get hurt, someone, we're elderly people in the area.
That man right there, take care of it.
With underlying health conditions.
Yes, ma'am.
It's, it's a serious problem. I know it's not only in our neighborhood, it's all over.
I sure appreciate it.
It's my concern.
Okay, thank you so much.
Um, can, can I address her?
I did go out and meet with her and spoke with her about it. I did speak with Jose. So he said that he would go out and look at the situation because it, it, it is more of a qualitative life where she lives, so. He was out of town when I spoke with him, so he said he would get back with her on that.
Is there anyone else?
Mr. Gregg? Mr. Gregg Taft?
Okay, is there anyone else in the audience that didn't get to sign the sheet that would like to address the council? Please come forward.
Mr. Gregg Taft, you want to speak? Oh, you passed, I'm sorry. So Mr. Richard? Mr. Richard Brown?
I signed the sheet. I know I signed the sheet. Richard Brown, living in District Four. And I came here to, to talk about something. But in the course of the last three hours, I've completely forgotten what it was I wanted to talk about. So I'm going to go to Plan B. And I'm going to give you all a short parliamentary lesson. And I think most or probably all of you know that I'm, I'm a registered parliamentarian. I've been working as a professional parliamentarian for over twenty years and, and I want to speak about something that I've noticed a few times in the past, but it came up again tonight. And that's simply to point out that, you know, and I'm speaking mostly to the council members and to the council president and to the public. But this is a council meeting and the council is in charge of it and particularly the council president. The council president runs the meeting, not the, not the mayor, not the council clerk. And I want to say right now that I think this council is exceedingly fortunate to have someone like, like Natalie Hall as the council clerk and Teresa as the deputy clerk. Natalie does an absolutely awesome job, fantastic job. You know, I sometimes preside as a professional presiding officer when a group wants an outside presiding officer. I wish I could move a meeting along as well as Natalie does. So Natalie has my utmost respect. I think she knows that she is extremely good. This council relies on her, y'all rely on her heavily, but you may rely on her just a little bit too much. And what concerned me was earlier today, um, during the discussion about the, um, on the budget, when the fireman's wife, and I forget her name, uh, she had spoken once and then there was a discussion between the council and the mayor. The mayor made some comments, but then she approached the podium and wanted to respond to the mayor's comments. And it was the council clerk who told her pretty brusquely that, that, you know, I'm sorry you spoke and you're not allowed to speak. That actually was the council president's job, not the clerk's job. I understand that over the years, this council has become very dependent upon the clerk because she is very good. But decisions like that are up to the council president, not the council clerk. And, and also, also the rules can be suspended. Any member could do what is customarily done and say, I would like to hear what Mr. or Mrs. so-and-so wants to say. And normally the tradition is, it's permitted. And if anyone objects, the council chairman rules and you can appeal from the ruling of the chair. But just wanted to point out that it's actually the council president who should make those decisions. And, and I don't mean any disrespect to Natalie because...
I, you know, that's...
She's awesome.
Yeah, she is. And Mr. Richard, that's my shortcoming on that. You know, that's, that's on me. I, like you, probably really, really depend on Natalie way too much than I should, okay? But as you say, you're awesome. Lady, you're awesome and I'm not going to deny anything. And I would say she spoke for me. You know, even though I'm the president, she spoke for me and she just got there a half second before I did. And that is Ms. Amy Hotard. That's Matt Hotard's wife. So that's who you were referring to that wanted to speak?
Yeah, that's who I was.
Yeah, it was Amy Hotard.
So.
Okay?
Again, I think we have a tremendous council and a tremendous council clerk.
Yeah. Councilman Branigan?
Richard, I'm just glad Natalie doesn't live in District Four.
Chief?
Yeah, I wanted to give this, uh, council update on the fire service. I had, uh, members of the department come here today to speak to you to give you an update on what's happening in the fire service and the outstanding job these guys are doing, so you could hear it from them yourselves. So I'm going to read what the training officer, who had to leave for another meeting that he had. This is his notes that he left. He said, "As our threats change, so does our demand for training and preparation. Today, your Kenner firefighters must have more training and be more prepared for more possibilities than at any time in history. Let the unfortunate attacks of New Year's Eve remind us it's not necessarily a question of how for us, but a question of when. For approximately the last eighteen months, with two full-time training officers, we've conducted three twenty-two-week academy classes, graduating fifty-six total recruits for Jefferson Parish, twenty-two new Kenner probationary firefighters. As of May twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five, the training office has processed a hundred and seventy-five training request forms that's training for, for outside of the city, Indiana, Maryland, Alabama, Baton Rouge, to Shreveport. We've completed eleven hundred hours of training so far, covering hazmat, incident management, industrial response, mass casualty, and everything in between. Just this year, your, our firefighters have tested and earned twenty-five new IFSAAC certifications. That's the International Service Accreditation Congress. Fifteen swift water rescue techs, three rope rescue techs, five rope rescue operators, six N F A, NFPA confined space rescuers, seven NFPA trench rescue techs, four graduates of FEMA's National Disaster and Academy and Emergency Management University's National Emergency Management Basic Academy for a hundred and forty hours. We have two fire instructors that has completed instruction. We have two fire instructors that has completed instructor three. This week, we finished an instructor one class for thirteen new instructors from nine different regional departments. The Kenner Fire Department Training Division has established itself not only as an asset to our firefighters in Kenner, but is rapidly, rapidly becoming a leader in our area, helping to improve overall response for all citizens of the southeast region. So our training is improving. In addition to that, we have a medical officer that I didn't invite to come today, but I talked to our medical director, our doctor, who was there doing medical training for the guys, and he came in my office and told me, he said, "Man, I was down there talking to the guys and telling them about the new procedures that we have to do with CPR and resuscitation," and he told me, he said, "Man, these guys are already on top of it. They're really great with some of the stuff that they're doing." The mayor gave you an example of what, everything else that's going on in the fire department with the purchase of new apparatus, completion of stations, in addition to the training and the personnel. You're right, Councilman Schwartz, when you were on the department, you were running with two people on the company. Most days, most of our companies have five members on, which is, which was a big safety issue. And YPL may not be of interest to you, the rest of the fire service is rated, all fire departments throughout the nation is rated by that standard of how well you protect the community. So I hadn't spoken before to this council about anything financial with the fire department because we have what attorneys call a kitchen sink lawsuit filed against the city of Kenner. And I don't want anything that I say regarding the firefighters' pay to come back and hurt the city of Kenner. Over the last year, year and a half, I saved the Ken, the city of Kenner directly several hundred thousand dollars from lawsuits filed by these firefighters.
All right, take on chief for a second, I got to, all this training that the fireman done, I mean, you're talking about CPR, you're trying to implement EMT class or something like that? You're trying to get more certifications? At my time, it was LSU certifications, but now it comes from Louisiana Fire, where do you ca, we used to be LSU, now where are they coming from? They're coming from the state fire marshals, right?
Yes, under the state fire marshal.
Okay, all these certifications that they're getting, um, the firemen are taking a lot of that on their own? Are you implementing that they must take these classes, or are you trying to voluntarily take these classes?
We're looking at train, changing the class plan to make it mandatory that you have certain trainings in order to become officers in, in Kenner Fire Department, because the last thing you will want is to have to follow somebody that don't know what they're doing.
Uh, look, I'm gonna tell you, Chief Zito and I sat down, and at that time it was LSU certifications, okay? We came up with certifications that we needed and certifications that were, we thought would help the guys out in their ranks, okay? At that time, uh, I pushed, and between Chief Zito and I, we maxed out education, just Chief Zito and I maxed out education on just the LSU certifications for firefighters, okay? At that time, we gave them an education incentive. You took that away because you said the attorney general said that was against the law? That we couldn't do that?
That's not, that's not true, council.
Okay, then why did you take the education incentive away?
The education incentive, the attorney general ruled on it, the way it was set up was, um, and attorneys correct me if I call it the wrong thing, but it's a misapplication of public funds. Y'all were paying guys to have firefighter one when you have to have firefighter one for the job. You were paying an incentive for something that you needed for the job.
Okay, yeah, at that time, it was to receive state pay, you had to have firefighter one, okay? That's, I can understand that, okay? Didn't they say anything about firefighter two, driver operator, or anything else like that? None of that was in there?
The, the education incentive...
So you just, you took away, you took away the firefighter's incentive to take it upon themselves to go, and now you've taken all this training that they're doing, and then when it comes to the budget, you're taking money or you're not giving them the two percent COLA that they should get, and, but you're requiring them to take more and more training all the time for their job, but you're not compensating them at all. And I got a problem with that because Chief Zito and I had it set up that where they were compensated.
Y'all, you get, the incentive plan, plan that you, the educational incentive plan that you're speaking of, at certain levels, at each and every level, it became volitive of what's required for the job.
Do you still have a copy of that letter by any chance?
It's, it's public record.
Or legal, does anybody?
I'm sure we have it. It's part of, it's, that's, we're getting into all the lawsuit claims, so I just wanted to step in. There's, there's lawsuits over this issue. The incentive pays, so just, just so you know.
Probably.
Okay.
Yeah, so, yeah.
But...
We're getting into that again.
Uh, I mean, we had it, Chief Zito and I had it maxed out.
And, and look, I can't explain exactly why it changed or anything like that. I know my husband's JPSO, he has a binder the size of your thing, full of all his training classes that he took last twenty-eight years and never got a dollar more for, for doing any of that. He did that because it's part of training, it's part of being a better policeman. I, I'm not quite sure why you've got to incentivize the fire department guys to want to be better firemen unless it, unless it improves their job skill, like they're going to be, I don't know, they're gonna hang off the side of a cliff or something like that, or they're gonna come in helicopters or something, but I don't understand if you're giving CPR classes because you provide CPR, the, the, the old rule used to be you got paid for that. I don't, I don't know, I can't answer that, but that's part of the lawsuit, so I'm just trying to keep us on the lawsuit stack.
Right, I, I just, within the fire department, there are like fifteen different sections of firefighting training that you can get within the fire, fire department, you know? Safety officer, aircrafts, rescues, firefighter, there's so many more that you can get to where JPSO or a police officer, I mean, you can do probably investigations or...
Oh, it's...
You know?
Binders full of training that they take before, just to make themselves better police officers, but I don't know, I can't answer that, but that's, that's what I'm saying. I just, we're getting into the lawsuit. They're suing over not getting paid for CPR classes, yes, for CPR certification.
I'm bringing my binder that I got from all my training after twenty-eight years.
It sounds like you did that, and that's, you know, whether you do it for money or you do it to be a better police officer or a better fireman, it's, that's where we are, so, but that's, that's why, that's part of it, so.
Councilman?
Oh, I just wanted to clarify, so we shouldn't be talking about all the details that we're talking about right now, is that my clarification? Thanks.
A motion to adjourn?